Tom Ashton, the chairman of the committee, my vice-chairman, councillor Nuttman is to my right. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the chamber through the rear doors and reception and out into the front car park. I would welcome all of those watching the meeting online and I would like to remind you that your comments will remain accessible as the recording will remain on the website. Just please ensure that mobiles etc are on silent and we'll move to the formal agenda. I do genuinely welcome, we have a lot of people joining us today, come online and come in the chamber, we have local representatives from areas that have been affected by flooding and we will pick those up as we move through the agenda, but genuinely everybody welcome, especially if you're joining us for the first time. Yes, apologies for absence, please.
No apologies, we've received chairman.
Councillor Reid.
Thank you. Representative from Southcasteven councillor Helen Crawford set out to be here but unfortunately with car problems she only got far as Falkingham, so she sends her apologies, thank you.
We send our regard in return, thank you for that. Declarations of interest, if anybody has any, if anything comes up during the course of the meeting, wave at me at the appropriate moment and we can take them then. Item three is the minutes of our last substantive meeting of this committee which was on the 14th of October, pages five to eight of the agenda pack. Councillor Baxter, please.
Sorry Chair, just to go back one, on declarations of members' interests, do we need to declare whether or not we are members of internal drainage boards, because I am?
That's picked up on our standing declarations and it's not a peculiar interest, so we're fine to take part. So minutes, are we content with the minutes from the 14th of October? Moves councillor Skinner, seconded councillor Reid, are we in agreed? Agreed, thank you. Pressing on to announcements, appreciate we have got quite a substantial amount of business to crack on through today, but we are expecting a report on the agenda today from the Storms Impact Working Group, of which all members of the committee are members, picking up on the impact of storms Babette and Henk. This report will now be considered for approval at an additional meeting of this committee on Tuesday the 18th of February. Simply comes down to making sure that the drafting is done and done well and done proper and done right, given the amount of time that we have all spent on this piece of work and also making sure that the other organisations that are a party to some of those recommendations have the opportunity to see that before we publish it. So it's just really etiquette and drafting why that's going to an additional meeting, but also I fully appreciate it is the single greatest piece of work that this committee has undertaken for a very long time and it is only right that we do it really well, as it will, depending on matters well beyond the control of this committee, it may well, it's the defining thing that we can leave from this term. The field trip to Somerset will be hosted by the Somerset Rivers Authority on Thursday and Friday of this week. I know some of you are joining us on that trip. The field trip will include visits to a water injection dredger at Western Zoiland on the river Parrot, near Bridgewater, as well as that meeting with the Somerset Rivers Authority on the Friday and we are, I know, exploring options for meeting with more people from Somerset on a less formal basis on the Thursday evening. So genuinely think that this will be a great opportunity to talk to people that have been in a similar situation to what we have been in Lincolnshire and have explored mechanisms for doing something about it. So really, and if anybody still wishes to go on that, I'm sure we can probably accommodate you even at this late hour, as I think it's really important for us to have that opportunity and that experience of those conversations with colleagues. That takes us on to executive council announcements, I understand councillor Davies is joining us online, please.
Thank you very much Chairman. Obviously, I'm going to start with my update as regards the flooding incidents that took place at the beginning of the month. Firstly, Lincolnshire County Council is working with the seven district councils to help communities recover after that severe heavy rain brought flooding to the county on the 6th and the 7th of January. Residents living in the county have once more had their lives turned upside down by flooding in the first days of this new year, with floodwater entering people's homes, their gardens or their businesses. Many of the residential and business properties so hard hit by flooding events this time were barely recovered from the impacts of storms Henk and Babette, which affected our county 12 months ago, yet here we are again devastated by flooding. The Lincolnshire Resilience Forum declared a major incident on the 6th of January and since doing so, agencies have been working tirelessly and collaboratively to mitigate the impacts from this event, prevent loss of life, protect our communities from harm and reduce impacts on businesses and property. To underline the sheer scale of this incident, the following is what we are currently aware of. Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue received 173 calls, evacuated 26 properties in Grantham and a school, 16 properties in Bellingborough and 12 properties from Whiberton West Road in Boston. Lincolnshire Police handled 90 calls, the County Council handled 250 calls and 185 inquiries through Fix My Street. There were 32 flooding related road closures. The A1 was closed on both carriageways on the 6th of January, the southbound reopened on the 7th of January and the northbound reopened on the 8th of January. This was due to the Foston Beck flooding the carriageway. With regards to properties affected, we're currently dealing with 141 reports of properties affected by internal flooding, although 32 of these are still to be confirmed. This will be confirmed as part of the investigation process. Of these, 37 are properties that were also flooded during storms Babette and Henk. There are 45 reports of external flooding and of these, 16 are locations that were also affected during storms Babette and Henk. With the exception of South Holland District Council, we have received reports of internal flooding to property in all district council areas in the county, with West Lindsay, East Lindsay and North and South Casteven district council areas having communities or individuals flooded again after storms Babette and Henk. Attention is now rightly returning to recovery and we are continuing our work to support those who have been affected, to put their lives, businesses and properties back together and assist them on that long road to recovery. Just want to touch on property flood resilience grants at this point. Following the events of early January, government departments have indicated that there is currently no intention of initiating the flood recovery framework to offer financial assistance to provide both immediate relief to those who have been affected by flooding and facilitate access to funds that can help make homes and businesses more resilient to future flooding events. However, a joint letter from the leader of all district authorities and the county council has been written to both the parliamentary undersecretary of state at the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government and the parliamentary undersecretary of state, Minister for Water and Flooding, asking for discretion to activate the flood recovery framework to support those who have been affected. The council awaits a formal response from them. Lincolnshire County Council continues to work with those affected by storms Babette and Henk, however, administering the existing death grant for property flood resilient measures for those eligible properties following last winter's storms. To date, 274 applications have been received for those affected during those storms. Of these, we received 225 letters of agreement to proceed for residents. Our survey contractor has now completed 221 survey visits. Installation of property flood resilience measures have now been completed on 19 properties with a further 53 due to be completed by the 31st of March under the initial contract. A further 102 installations are due to be completed by contractors by the 30th of September. We are also supporting 23 residents with retrospective applications after they have instigated work themselves. As an authority, we continue to develop and monitor a programme of maintenance and capital flood risk related works across the county, with a floods and water team working closely with highways colleagues to ensure a joined up approach when undertaking works. Currently, capital funded surface water alleviation works are taking place in the village of Kirkby on Bain, with phase two works commencing in Long Bennington. In addition, a forward programme of capital funded schemes for the next five years is in development alongside a programme of investigation works, including CCTV, survey and cleansing work on Lincolnshire County Council assets to ensure they are in the best possible condition and are as effective as possible. Chairman, that's my report on where we are after the event. I have made comments previously at the executive of the county council regarding my belief that we now need a different approach from government in relation to how flood alleviation works are funded, not just by the environment agency but also by the drainage boards. We have all been aware and taken part in the campaign in relation to funding for drainage boards. We need to continue that campaign and put our foot on the gas, as they say. It is quite clear that these flooding events, which are now becoming quite regular occurrences in Lincolnshire, are not going to suddenly disappear, we are going to have to go through these events again, I fear, that we need to make Lincolnshire as resilient as possible and we're only going to be able to do that by our actions and the pressure we can bring to bear on government. I'll stop there and happy to take any points or views from the members of the committee.
Thank you very much councillor Davies, we've got councillor Baxter, please.
Thank you. I'd like to ask councillor Davies, in the March budget last year, was it March, might have been February last year, we put aside several, almost £3 million for flooding and drainage measures, including £1.8 million for highways, drainage and jetting. Can I ask how much of that budget has been spent and does councillor Davies feel that we are now ahead of where we should be on highways, drainage and jetting, along with other flooding works?
I'm probably going to defer councillor Baxter to officers in the room to give you an update on that. However, I would say that I do monitor with councillor Davies the work that is underway from the highways jetting team and they are getting well around the county, there's more to be done, it's a long term programme, but I think we are as far advanced as we can be with the resources and the manpower we have to do it. Bear in mind that money did create additional support for that work. However, we can never be fully ahead of natural events. Two inches of rainfall in two hours is going to cause a massive problem to all our systems, whether they're cleaned or not. It's better that they're all cleaned and I agree with you in that point, I'm sure officers in the room can update you further.
Thank you Matthew, have you anything to add on that, please?
Yes, certainly, thank you Chair. So I can't speak on behalf of highways colleagues, but obviously their current programme of work and spend is reported into the highways scrutiny committee, so there will be papers to support that, but as councillor Davies has said, very much aware that they've got a very active programme of cleansing and maintenance works ongoing. Regarding the floods and water team, we've completed, as previously reported, works in Brunt Bruton and Hoff on the Hill, in the region of over £100,000 there, currently on site in Kirkby on Bain and Long Bennington and our current forward programme of work for the next five years is currently forecast to be around £4.5 million. So that will be taken into consideration, recommendations that come out of the section 19 investigations, obviously that was considerable for storm Babette and Henk. So it will be an adaptive programme as we look at where the priorities are and the key issues, but that will be a combination of physical works on the ground, but also, as alluded to by councillor Davies, that will also be CCTV, jetting, investigation work to really fully understand the assets that are there and how effective they are, to make sure A) they're working or if further improvements are made as part of a wider scheme going forwards.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions for councillor Davies? Councillor Beale, please.
Thank you. Not so much a question but an observation, South Holland district were lucky with not having any recorded internal flooding earlier this year, however, we are only too aware of the impact this has and the importance of the drainage systems with the IDBs and the need for adequate funding going forward. Yes, we had sort of Pacific Highway issues with flooding and the gullies, but that's obviously not within the remit here. It is to a degree more by luck than judgement that we escaped this time, thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you Chair. It was just to point out in response to councillor Davies' comment about funding going forward that the government announced in November, I think it was, that there's a review of the way in which capital funding is prioritised and the formula put together, so there's going to be some consultation on that out shortly, so I'd remind members of the committee to look out for that when it comes out in due course.
Thank you councillor Bonney.
Thank you Chair. Just to councillor Davies really, or whoever, clearly since we had the severe flooding in market raisin, we've been lucky in that we haven't had the issues that other parts of the county have had from storm Babette, Henk and last year. And therefore, one's concern is that the priorities which are in the forefront of people's minds are the current flooding and that there's a danger that we might lose what historically has happened, which actually could occur at any other time, depending on where the rain falls and circumstances. So it's just some reassurance that we aren't going to lose out for market raisin and other areas which might have had severe flooding in the past, but luckily haven't had it for the last two years.
I'm happy to respond to that councillor Bonney, can rest assured that I'm very aware of the issues in market raisin and just because they didn't get flooded in January the 6th and 7th, the impact of what happened with Babette and Henk haven't gone away. The section 19 work and the reports attached to that work will give us a clear direction of travel in terms of what needs to be done to try and alleviate these problems in the future. And of course, the events of January 6th and 7th, where we have internal flooding and matters, they're all going to be subject to further section 19 investigations and the reporting process. So rest assured that just because it didn't happen in January, we will not forget what happened previously.
Thank you very much and thank you for that councillor Davies. Do we have any officer announcements while we're on this point, that we're not picking up elsewhere, thank you, which takes us on to item five, which is a presentation regarding the local government special interest group on drainage board levies, this is pages 19 to 39 of the agenda pack and will allow us to explore some of the issues relating to drainage board funding and how it impacts on the budgets of district councils. We have presentations this morning from Christine Marshall and James Gilbert of the South and East Lincolnshire Council Partnership, who I understand are joining us online, so I shall hand over to you, please.
Thank you Chairman, it's a pleasure to be with you all this morning. As you may be aware, James, myself and colleagues have been lobbying government with respect to the drainage board levy impacts on the budgets of the councils involved and I'd just like to quickly run through a presentation with you on some of the salient features of that, so thank you James. So if we go on to the role of the internal drainage board, obviously have a huge beneficial impact for the whole of the UK, reducing flood risk and managing water, protecting land, motorways and power stations and we work very closely with Ada and our drainage boards as they have a vitally important role to protect and support our communities and our economies. A little bit about the history of the IDB levy, those of you that have lived in Lincolnshire for many years may remember when you had your own bills through the doors from the IDBs and then in the 1970s councils began collecting the special levy for administrative ease. Later on during that period, it was decided to spread the special levy over cost over all household in district areas and that's when the history of all of this becomes a little bit tricky in terms of the financing. Thereafter, the levy was consumed into the council tax requirement and that was then capped. It was funded by government via RSG, but when the 1314 system came in, it was significantly reduced and we have recently commissioned some advice from LG Futures, which is being reviewed as we speak, that clearly shows the loss of income to the authorities impacted and how a modest amount of that did flow through into other systems, but is somewhat adrift of the figures now being lifted. And what happened then is the annual increase has effectively meant that we were eating into council tax and our other income in order to fund the IDB levy and you'll see that on some of the later slides. So 22 and 3 saw huge increases in IDB levies, for South Holland as an example, in 2122 to 23, they saw a £200,000 increase and £300,000 the following year. So very significant and that was as a result of, as you'll recall back then, fuel and in particular power increases. I'm not sure the full effect of standing charges were being felt at that point, that came later in 34. But just as an example of this, for certainly three of my authorities, is we have relatively modest net budgets that are feeling the full implications of those increases. So for Boston, the IDB is effectively 61% of the council tax requirement and 22% of the net budget. And what that means is, is with no income coming in to fund it, it is making it incredibly difficult to balance those budgets and indeed making those budgets very precarious. Just to set this in a really good context, you can see here, and the one I tend to use is the East Lindsay line, in the middle, you can see there the council tax received for 34, 7.5 million, the levy was 4.9, the council tax yield for that year was 321,000 but the IDB increase was 946,000, so not only consuming all of the council tax shield but also eating into budgets the tune of 625,000. And it was that year really that caused a lot of the initial activity around lobbying government to seek to find a longer term solution to this and this is why we're asking for change. So we've got a relatively small number of councils who are disproportionately impacted, you know, I could compare to a district council in Leicestershire that does not have an IDB and two of my authorities have got £1 million bills if you take the past three years. It's putting them at a significant financial disadvantage and making them financially precarious. The funding approach is unsustainable, forcing service cuts to be made, that's certainly been the case for one of the authorities, preventing statutory service growth, possibly needing to put a new waste round, the taxes being consumed by the IDB levy. And there's no doubt that councils will be responding by cutting back on services investment and reducing service provision. So we've got a tally of the IDB levy increased costs and you can see it's Lindsay, 325, it's 1.4 million, I can tell you from 12 to 56, 1.8 million, significant embedded costs. Boston and Scotland over that extended period, it's circa a million pound each and the percentage increases over that period have been close to 50%. Some other authorities have also seen significant increases, you can see there City of Lincoln and North Casteven have similarly had very significant increases in their IDB levy. South Casteven and West Lindsay, lower sums but again still significant percentage increases. So looking at how the IDB national picture has changed, in 223 we were looking at a national bill of round about 39 million, I wish it was 39,000, 39 billion and a modelled 5% is coming in at 52.4 million. I think it's fair to say that the picture for next year's levy setting is a little unclear, I've seen some IDBs indicate very low levies but other IDBs indicating 3.5% to 5%, I think that will all come out in the wash over the next few weeks, but remember that does not allow for land transfer, so it is worthy remembering that land transfer is on top of that. So going on to the next, this is interesting, so we were successful in attaining £3 million worth of grants back in 34 with an uplift which represented 42% of the uplift, but as you can see, as the levy has increased, the offer of the 3 million has not kept track and indeed is contracting because it's on a flat line, so we are doing a huge amount of effort at the moment with the SIG and we met the minister last week to try and lobby for additional funding closer to the demand that's hitting the council's budgets. Just one example, Great Yarmouth saw an increase of 500% in special levy from one of its internal drainage boards for 45s, that's a particularly good example. Again, the boards have had huge increases in standing charges as a result of changes to the structure of those fees, but again, it means that those authorities that are receipt of the levy charges are having to absorb some quite significant uplifts. And going on to agricultural land transfer, some of you may be familiar with this, is when land is transferred from the agricultural use into business use or housing use, it could be, similarly for a country park, for a road, not all of those accrue business rates or necessarily council tax and ultimately that's not how those systems were designed, the council tax system was designed to support services, not IDB levy and similarly on business rates with the forecast reset coming up, any value accrued through business rate uplifts will effectively be tapered out, it is expected. Standing charges have just mentioned and a really good example at the bottom there with St Germain's Pumping Station increased by 1,282% of its previous bill, so very, very significant. So we did also lobby Ofgem earlier last year to try and raise this point with them and they were consulting on their plans for further review and we did feed into that, but what we have found from that process is it does take a significant amount of time to influence some of these charging mechanisms. So the increase we've effectively had over that period is circa 11 million, that's not including the uplift from 2122. And going on to the solutions, obviously government could fund IDBs directly, it could fund full cost, we could see modifications to the council tax, structural legislation to remove it from the tax requirement, which would be challenging, I think, in terms of parliamentary time, or the levy being moved to another body. So in terms of the lobbying effort, which is now significant and James has had a huge role in driving this forward, we've got 40 councils on the SIG, MPs fully engaged in the campaign, with a huge number of parties now being lobbied or engaged on this particular issue. Our main challenge at the moment is the £3 million is not sufficient to support the most impacted councils and we need a longer term funding solution. support the most impacted councils and we need a longer term funding solution. So I'd like to thank you very much. I'm very happy, either James or myself are very happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Christine. And I'm very much aware of how much work has gone in to putting both this information together and setting up the special interest group, which is no mean feat. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Christine and James at all, please? If I will just start things off. The presentation refers to five alternative funding mechanisms for internal drainage boards. Which of the five, if any, do you think have the best chance of coming to fruition?
At the moment, I think the conversation is more about additional funding, Chairman, with a view to looking at a longer term mechanism within the funding process for supporting this charge.
And which of those alternatives do we think government is most likely to come up with if we're looking at reinventing how some of this is done or whether we're looking to government to fund this long term? What is the preferred long term solution? I mean, in my experience, I'm sure a lot of other people, government likes to have a solution that people are getting behind or are lobbying for. Whereas presenting government with a number of opportunities, the likelihood is that they won't choose any of them.
I think it's a little unclear at the moment and they don't, they're not giving us a clear indication of their direction of travel and thinking on that. I think the comment we had last week is that all options are still on the table.
Yeah, that was very much the view we got from the minister last week and councillor Ashton, that there wasn't a preferred solution particularly. Other than they'd look at the most appropriate solution, they'd continue to work through what the best solution might be. So that's why the focus of the SIG, I believe at the moment should be on getting that three million pounds increase to 10 million, because I don't think in the short term, we're going to have the solution. So we need that temporary fix, if you like, to bridge us until the, until the long term solution's worked up. So I think we're away from knowing what the longer term solution is going to be at this point in time.
Thank you. And I mean, just developing that, that train of thought a little bit further. And I fully appreciate, I'm happy to declare I'm a district councillor as well, I'm a member of drainage board, so I understand this from different sides. But when you look across the broad scope of challenges for funding of flood risk and water management, both in Lincolnshire and across the country, we're very lucky where we have drainage boards insofar as they are relatively well funded. The challenge that we've got and the challenge, if government is looking at being more generous in terms of funding flood risk and water management, is that there are, there is a great long list of non-IDB assets that are calling out for the same government resources as we're hoping government are going to put in and help solve this problem for district councils.
I think that's a valid point, Chairman. I think the challenge is they are indeed juggling all of those financial pressures at the moment. But I think we're some way away from getting an indication as to what that longer term solution looks like, although they have talked about adjustments within the funding formula in the past.
Thank you very much for that. And it just worth, perhaps in addition to the figures presented here, it's always worth just focusing minds that, I think you mentioned a council in Leicestershire, I was just trying to find what North West Leicestershire are charging now on a bandy property. But for a long time, they're held at £158 for a district council. And as you rightly point out, they are a council, a district council that doesn't have a drainage board. So every single penny of that 158 or 165, wherever it is now, is available to fund district level council services. Whereas if you take out the 60% or thereabouts of what we're experiencing in some of our Lincolnshire councils, the £166 that East Lindsay is charging, when you take out the element that is spent on special levy, you are left with less money than the £79.19, which is the average parish council charge in that district council area. So it does, I think, focus minds on just how out of kilt the system has become through no fault of drainage board, through no fault of district councils, but simply the misalignment of land drainage and local government finance legislation. Colleagues, has anybody else got councillor Baxter, then councillor Skinner, please?
Thank you. As mentioned earlier, I'm a member of the Welland Deepings Internal Drainage Board and they do a great job, as do most of the internal drainage boards. And I really appreciate the work of the Association of Internal Drainage Boards to put our case to government. And they've done a lot of work and I know that we've both been down to London to lobby about this issue because we are, for many years, we've been, the internal drainage boards and the district councils have been expected to make bricks without straw in terms of flood defences. And they do a great job, even though they are relatively small organisations. I would even, no offence, I would even say that they do a better job of managing the money they've got than the leviathan of the Environment Agency that seems to struggle with all that it has to do. I wanted to ask two questions. First of all, you mentioned a government commitment, presumably that's a commitment from the new government, not the old government. And secondly, while we have residents from Gretford and elsewhere in the room, is there a mechanism by which internal drainage boards can expand their geographical area? Because I know that in Gretford, part of the problem is the hydrology and the lack of being able to push the water back out to sea, which has led the soil around Gretford and other villages extremely damp. And they are, a meeting in Gretford the other day, they were very keen to see whether or not they could tie up with an internal drainage board to make things better. Thank you.
Through you, Chairman. On the first point, yes, we have had a formal commitment from the previous government and more of an informal commitment from the current government to address this issue. So I believe we have that commitment there. In terms of the IDBs expanding their remit or the setting up of new IDBs indeed, whilst not technical experts in this area, we are aware of new IDBs being looked at and changes in the legislation that was proposed to enable IDBs to expand their areas. I'm sure that AIDA could answer that in more detail, but that is my understanding.
Thank you. I'll invite Peter Bateson, who's in the room, who can help with that, please?
Yeah, there's an environment bill currently going through Parliament and one of the aspects of that bill is to allow new drainage boards to be created. I know Cumbria is an area where they're wanting to create a new drainage board and also for us to expand our drainage boards. As you're aware, Lincolnshire has 40% of the county covered by IDBs, but the extended catchments of those IDBs could cover the whole of Lincolnshire. But of course, that would have a knock on impact on special levies because the councils that are involved would obviously be caught up with that.
And I think that really does cut to the core of the issue, that the legislation that empowers boards to raise effectively the levy against the value of the domestic property in their drainage district, which is benefiting from the protection, that's drawn in a ratable value, but is now applied as a charge to a council, to all of the rate payers of a district council. In effect, this is one of, there are people living on hills that are making a contribution to keeping the fens drained simply by virtue of which district council they happen to live in, which just demonstrates, I think, how misaligned these arrangements have become as rates have moved into council tax. I've got councillor Skinner, then councillor Davy online, please. So councillor Skinner.
Thank you, Chairman. Looking through this, I'm really pleasantly surprised how far it's come as district councils grouped together. And originally it started from three. We were very lucky from the point of view that we had MPs buy in. I'm just going to ask a question. How much buy in have we've got from the 41 districts and the MPs? Because that's a considerable amount of persuasion in the House. Thank you.
Can I ask James to answer that?
Yeah, thanks, Christine. So I think we've got quite a significant amount of support from MPs within government. I mean, we did an awful lot with the current government prior to the election. So we've done quite a lot to secure support through many members in the House of Lords, for example, Barris Taylor, who's now in MHCLG, is a huge advocate for the work that the SIG's been doing. But at the same time, through the events that we've delivered in the House of Commons, we've been able to speak to many of the MPs that represent the councils. We did sign to represent the constituencies of the impacted council. We did one event prior to the general election, one after to capture the new MPs. And there's really good awareness, I think, of the issues. And one of the things we did do last week, actually after meeting with the minister, we also met with Victoria Atkins, MP in her capacity as Shadow Secretary of State at DEFRA. And she's now encouraging the MPs to support the process for influencing the rise of the three million to 10 million through the draft settlement consultation. So I think there's a vast amount of support there and a good understanding amongst MPs now as to the challenge that the IDB levy is presenting.
Thank you, and councillor Davy, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm listening with interest to this debate. I think a couple of points. Firstly, as you know, we've always supported the district councils in their campaign in relation to just getting this matter resolved at government level. I think, however, obviously we're heading into a period of uncertainty with local government reorganisation and devolution. I'm very clear that matters such as the environment and flooding should be dealt with at a local level. So making sure there is a consensus and agreement on that going forward. And the pace of things at government level in relation to LGR means that there is a danger that we don't get things like this properly addressed in how things shake out. So I think it's really incumbent upon, not just the county, but all districts as well, to make sure there's a very clear view, a concerted and unified view on how we support the drainage boards and the work of protecting people and businesses from flooding in the next decades going forward is going to be handled. So it's just really a call out to everyone to make sure that we're having a proper discussion around this matter going forward. And I'd also say that, you know, having what I said earlier in the meeting about these events are going to become much more frequent going forward, we're going to need to budget a lot more money for the work of the drainage boards. And I think we need to fight a unified battle in how we address that. So I just think we need to be, I think we need to recognise the fact that government is moving at pace. And sometimes, as you know, when they do that, things fall between the cracks. And I would also say this, all decisions at government level, whether whoever's in power, are always made by Treasury ultimately. And I think whilst it's right to talk to the environment teams at DEFRA and in SHADOW, I think we also need to be having a much more concerted discussion with Treasury about the importance of addressing this issue.
Thank you, councillor Davy. Councillor Beale?
Thank you. One wishes all power to the special interest group through Christine, James and obviously Paul Redgate. With the announcement of the abolition of district councils, do you feel this will help or hinder the special interest group's objectives? Thank you.
That's an interesting question. Can I suggest it provides another opportunity to raise this particular matter and look for that longer term solution?
Thank you. I think it does, it does raise an interesting quandary because one of the powerful arguments that district councils are able to make at the moment is that this is a significant proportion of their council tax take and of their revenue budget. And yet if we move to a world where we have unitary councils rather than district councils, then similar to the situation that you see with North and North East Lincolnshire, within the Greater Lincolnshire area, effectively that special levy comes out of a much larger budget. So in a way, it disguises that problem a little bit in the way that it's incredibly stark with our district councils in Lincolnshire. But it disguises it, it doesn't make it go away. It is still as absolutely acute to those unitary councils that are trying to balance their budgets, delivering county level services and district level services and meeting this cost. And I think it does focus minds on that fundamental principle of the drainage rate being levied on those properties that are benefiting from the protection, which frankly would otherwise not exist were it not for the drainage board. It's a very old fashioned and I'd probably say out of fashion concept of that level of direct, effectively direct taxation, but relating to the benefit derived. But if you look at the work that drainage boards do and the extent to which they are accountable to their rate payers, it does deliver a value for money that is really hard to come by in any other level of government. And this is actually the danger in a way with hoping government is going to fix the problem by giving a load of money. Because the first year that the government gave a load of money to councils that were affected, they didn't give it to the unitary councils, they only did it to the districts on the basis of the impact on their budget and the perceived greater need. Whereas actually, the need isn't on your revenue, on your budget size. You need it, you need it if you've got a board that needs special levy and you don't want to be in that position of balancing council services and good drainage, which is not a position that was ever envisaged or should ever come about. But I don't see anybody else indicating to come in on this. And I think we've given it a pretty good covering. I would, if the committee is minded, suggest that obviously the information presented on the impact of internal drainage board levies is noted, including the outcomes of the lobbying to date. But I'd also ask, if you were inclined, that the committee record its support in principle for alternative funding mechanisms for internal drainage boards to reduce the financial burden on council taxpayers and district councils. I'm happy to move that if you're willing to support it. Seconded, councillor Beale and all agreed. So hopefully Christine and James, you've got the support of this committee behind you in the work that you're doing and hopefully government will support something useful soon.
Thank you, committee and Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time with us this morning. That takes us on happily to item six, which is our internal drainage board update, pages 41 to 43 of your papers. And incredibly grateful, we've got Peter Bateson, the chief executive of Witherford Internal Drainage Board with us this morning.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. You will have seen the paper that summarises the position for most of the IDBs in Lincolnshire. Lindsay Marsh, who's the largest drainage board, submitted a late submission, but many of their issues are exactly the same as the one seen here. If I can summarise the recovery fund for members first, you'll be aware, back in February 24, a £75 million recovery fund was announced by government, which was to be applied for and spent by March 25, which was a huge ask, particularly as most of the funding didn't start trickling through to Lincolnshire IDBs until September. And given some of the works that were required, you know, needed planning and third parties to deliver them was a pretty big ask. So we were very grateful that in November 24, Emma Hardy, the new floods minister, announced that the tranche two funding, because there were two tranches to the funding, could now be delivered by March 26. So that gave IDBs in Lincolnshire a much better chance for spending the money on those assets that needed repairing. Now, most of the tranche one funding was really to put IDB funding back on an even keel. You'll be aware, certainly for my board, we robbed half of the general reserve in order to meet the costs of storms Babette and Henk. We pumped continuously throughout that period, 24 hour pumping, and many IDBs in Lincolnshire were the same. So that tranche funding has basically restored the general So that tranche funding has basically restored the general reserves for those IDBs, which will be good news for local councils because it means we won't then need to claw that back through the rate over time. Part of that funding was also used to repair assets in the district. So slip repairs, pumping stations that were hammered through too much use or were inundated with floodwaters coming out of Main River. Those are the issues that are being corrected by this recovery funding. And totting up what I've seen on here and on the late Lindsay Marsh, you're looking at about 20 million pounds of funding has already been guaranteed to boards in Lincolnshire. And that's a huge figure. The annual budget for most boards in Lincolnshire isn't much more than that. So that is a huge welcome injection of income into IDBs. Tranche two funding is currently being applied for, and I think you will see probably not as much, but certainly a significant sum for that. And for my own board, that's going to enable us to deal with some of the desilting work, which desperately needs doing and is very difficult to put on the rate. For our board alone, it's about four and a half million pounds. Our annual income is only 3.5 million, so it will take many years to achieve that. But this tranche funding enables us to get started with that. So that's good news on the finance front. I know some boards are still suffering, particularly the Witham and Humber boards. Although the emergency was stood down at the beginning of last week, they were still dealing with aspects of the storm and they only really went into recovery at the end of last week. The other issues you see on here are some of the issues caused by EA Main Rivers. And this has nothing to do with the local teams and everything to do with Treasury and funding. Because a lot of the rural water courses don't attract funding because that follows chimney pots, it means that a lot of the routine maintenance work isn't being done. And that's leading to quite a lot of the issues you see on here with overtopping, low sponso on raised embankments, lack of desilting work, meaning there's no capacity in the channel. And obviously, once you get into a lowland system, conveyance is king. So you really have to keep those water courses clean so we can get to our pumping stations and out to sea. I haven't got anything else to say apart from that report, but I'm very happy to take questions.
Thank you, Peter. Colleagues, have you any questions to pick up on the work of drainage boards in Lincolnshire? Councillor Bonny?
Thank you, Chair. More of a comment really. I noticed that the boards that we've received reports from are all in Lincolnshire. But as far as I'm aware, there's three or four possibly smaller IDBs within West Lindsay who have not, to my knowledge, submitted anything to this committee or even to the Storm Working Group. And I'm wondering whether we should be pursuing that so that we have a complete picture of what is happening in Lincolnshire. And I know as the Yancome in particular moves into North Links as well, it will give us a picture of what's happening in Greater Lincolnshire and whether we can actually as a committee ask for those reports forthcoming.
I'm sure we can take that away and make sure that we are getting reports from all of the boards that we're able to and equally more than happy for all of them to come as often as they wish. Peter?
The chief execs of Lincolnshire are invited to group meetings every three or four months and they are invited. And obviously, it's the people who turn up that go through this thing. Can I just make one more point, Mr Chairman? That's on costs of IDBs. Just so you're aware that, you know, obviously, we're not sitting back and just passing on these increases willy nilly to councils. We've just applied for some funding for a new pumping station, which has just been built at Wrangle. Cost four and a half million. 22,000 of that came from the board, which is about half a percent of our rate. And that will enable that pumping station to run at 50% of the energy cost of the one that was there before. So for very little cost to ratepayers, we are able to future proof the energy cost of that station. And most IDBs are trying to do that with their ailing assets.
Thank you. And I think we've been incredibly lucky across Lincolnshire to attract the amount of grant and aid funding that we have done. And I think a lot of that down to the work that boards have done in putting those bids in, building that evidence base and demonstrating time and again the value for money and efficiency that they can give in spending that money when it comes through. I always say, you know, we get as much flood risk and water management as we're prepared to pay for, be it as a community, as a county, as a country. And I think from what Peter's saying, you know, we've clearly got a direction to travel that other organisations could well, do well to follow. I've got councillor Skinner, then Fleetwood, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, keep up the good work. It's really needed. Concerns on the paperwork regarding silt levels. The biggest thing is there, you lose all your free board on the bank design. But also it puts added pressure onto the banks anyway, so they can fail. Ironically, all those types of failure are actually on dot gov, so it's not too hard. The other question I'd have would be with regarding maintaining winter levels, obviously because of the pressure on the boards and the tides, particularly now part of the world, Peter. Are we having problems getting things back down to winter levels? Are there other problems in there, working with other people, et cetera? Because those winter levels are there for a reason. Thank you.
On the levels, Paul, I think you find that when we can see a storm event coming, we would take the water levels down. We operate about a metre different in summer and winter levels. So in summer, we keep it higher for the environment, leisure, activities and so farmers can irrigate. In winter, we take it down a metre lower. And we will take it lower than that if we know guaranteed there's a Met Office storm on the way. We're obviously able to pump our catchment, our particular catchment on the east coast. Other IDBs have to rely on EA Main River and therefore they don't enjoy the same luxury of knowing that they can do that. And the EA are obviously at the whim of the tides as to whether they can get rid of that water in time. And, you know, if an event happens to coincide with a high tide, there's nothing they can do about it until it goes down.
Thank you for confirming my thoughts on that. Any news on the hobble replacement?
We're currently entering to contracts for pre-construction. And we have funding from the EA to deal with that. That's about 6 million pounds of spend before a spade even goes in the ground. It's a huge pumping station, probably second in size to St Germain's. You're talking about 70 or 80 million construction cost. And at the moment, we have enough benefits in the catchment for that to come through FDGIA funding, not local ratepayers. And if that comes off, it'll be a massive achievement for the district.
Thank you. Thank you for confirming that some progress. There's several bits in there with regard to the law of unintended consequences. Certainly the supply of electric and the standing charges. I think those companies could do better because they affect the way our areas drain. Thank you.
Councillor Fleetwood?
Yes, this becomes a balancing act, doesn't it? And this morning's a balancing act. First of all, apologies for my late arrival. There are two meetings working concurrently, of which I was invited to both of them. Although I'm a Gemini with a split personality, many people would like to put a knife through me and have maybe none of me or part of me, I don't know, but I've managed both meetings. Okay, so moving on to finances, and this is retrospective, of course. We're talking about payments from last year towards last year's floods. We must remember that some 10 days ago, we had some flash floods. And luckily, and I will say luckily, the river levels in the Witham were low because, believe you me, there was a lot of water there. And I think that if you were to look at Washinborough Fenn, there was overtopping, there was an awful lot of assets. There are slippages on banks here and there which are yet to come. So we are talking here retrospectively about money from a year ago. There is more required to fulfil what's actually happening now. And yes, there's another storm cycle coming at the end of the week. I believe it's mainly wind, but let's hope it's not rain because with the assets as they stand at the moment, I think there's going to be some real pressures in there. So just looking at the cycle, we have the balancing act of finances between the two floods, well, between last year's flood and this year's flood. And this is, if you like, some payments towards what was happening last year. And there does need to be some level of top up coming from somewhere to respect the fact that the assets are in a worse condition now than they were eight or nine months ago. I know in Fisket and Fen as an example, there was a promise that the two slumps in the bank were going to be repaired before Christmas. Well, hey, guess what? It didn't happen. And it's still work in progress and still trying to get back on it. And there's so many other assets still in a bad state of repair. But then it becomes the issue between, the fight between the IDBs, and I will say the fight, the fight between the IDBs and the Environment Agency, where you have the differing levels of maintenance between the two organisations. And there needs to be some balancing, there needs to be something brought forward. Because at the end of the day, we can sit in these meetings and we can talk about things very nicely. But at the end of the day, there's people out there. Just over a week ago, I was out with people, sandbags, flooding, fire engines. It's not pleasant, it really isn't pleasant to never forget that you are here to hopefully make something work better for people with wet carpets, for farmers who are under pressure, whether it's inheritance tax or whatever, but farmers who are under pressure from a variety of causes, just trying to make an honest living.
Thank you. Councillor Middleton?
Thank you, Chairman. In my past life, I've been involved with delivering major projects around the world in different industries. I'm now fortunate enough to sit on two drainage boards. And they always impress me with their efficiency, their enthusiasm, their wanting to achieve. And I look at the way they deal with projects and it fills me with confidence. I deal with the Environment Agency every now and again. And I have to say that I find them wanted in most areas. Is there an argument for us to move the responsibility of a lot of the maintenance of our water courses and the capital project work from the EA to the drainage boards? And how would we achieve that?
I don't think that's necessarily a question for Peter. You're welcome to have a go at it.
Obviously, you're aware that we operate under public sector cooperation agreements. So we do a lot of maintenance work for the Environment Agency. In their report that you'll see in a second, some of those water courses have been maintained by IDBs. So we do do quite a lot of that work already. But that's negotiated with the Environment Agency each year, depending on the funding they've got for those water courses. And I said before, you know, if they aren't able to attract funding, then they will get less maintenance, even if they are a medium consequence water course.
Do we have any further updates on the status of Highland Water recharging to the Environment Agency this year? I know the RFCC effectively gave an undertaking that it would pay if government didn't. I'm just wondering where that's ended up and where it's looking to go for next year, Morgan perhaps? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I believe the proposal's been put to RFCC this week to look at the deficit within Lincolnshire Drainage Boards from Highland Water last year. There remains an issue going forward in future years, which will need to be resolved.
Thank you. I think that's actually quite key to what councillor Middleton was asking, is that ultimately, IDBs should only be dealing with the water that falls out of the sky unless they're effectively paid for. They're paid to take additional water from Highland areas through their system. And whilst it would be great to imagine a world where they take over everything else in between, unless there's the funding for doing it, it's effectively the ratepayers that are already paying either domestic or business or agricultural rates to keep themselves dry, end up at that point, if the funding mechanism isn't sorted at the beginning, paying for other people's water that just happens to be coming past their fields. I don't see anybody else indicating. Ah, councillor Brooks?
Thank you, Chairman. I didn't want to let this item go by without just raising the point made by the Black Slough's Internal Drainage Board there at the bottom about the decommissioning of the Black Slough's Pumping Station, which I think has potentially had a great effect on several homes in Boston and furthered up the catchment in places like Billingsborough, et cetera. And I'm sure it'll come up later on in the agenda, but I just think it's been mentioned by the Black Sloughs under this item and it ought to be raised. And I think that the Black Slough, the decommissioning of the Black Slough's Pumping Station should be looked at again with a view to getting it back into action. Because I really believe in it and that it would have seriously helped. And I'm sure, well, it says here that the Black Slough's Internal Drainage Board did. And I know that they weren't happy at the time when it was decommissioned. I know it said these decisions were taken in conjunction with the drainage boards and partners. But there's no doubt about it, the Black Slough's Internal Drainage Board did not want that pumping station closed and did, and carried out a lot of work to see if they could have taken it in-house and been responsible for it themselves. But it just would not have been fair on the ratepayers to have done that. They just could not have seen their way forward to have been able to put those costs onto the people in the area. So I just wanted to raise that at this point. I'm sure it'll occur again later on in the debates on the other items on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. And I mean, to be fair, I've also got a question relating to the EA station at Bourne, but I was going to hold off until we get to the EA report and come back to pick up these bits, appreciating that we're really asking Peter these questions at the moment. But good points and well made. Councillor Overton?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted to add support to your work. I was really pleased to be able to support it in the Houses of Parliament recently with you, yourself and your work and other colleagues here. And I think that it is so important that we, A, make a good noise about things, we're noisy enough, and B, have the data and the important work from officers to make sure that it is all thoroughly backed up in a really strong argument. So really just to thank you for that. I'd just like to pick up the question of coordination of the different organisations and whether we can do more on that. It is difficult, I know. And sometimes we have, in my area for example, homes that were flooded in the storm Babette and they're still not back in their homes. You know, it is, I did hear that there was 53, I think, still to go. So can we get things quicker? Money from the government, perhaps it is. Can we get those grants out quicker and we could ask for them to come more quickly? And can we get the coordination at all improved? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else indicating to speak. Peter, would you like to add anything more? Thank you. We have, again, I think, given this issue quite some coverage. And obviously, we will pick up some elements of this as we move through the agenda with other partner organisations. Could I therefore suggest that the information that we've had presented by Peter is noted and that we, and that the committee's concerns on the impact of water coming from Main Rivers and the risk that posed to internal drainage board from Main River networks in Lincolnshire, that the concerns are recorded and that the drainage boards are supported in efforts to remedy this, please? Do we have, are you happy to support that? Thank you. That, thank you again, Peter, for your updates and contributions. And likewise to all of the internal drainage boards and officers who have supplied information for us. And just because we haven't mentioned it up until now, we may be mentioning it again. And just because we haven't mentioned it up until now, we may be mentioning it again in a few moments' time. That takes us on to item seven, which is the Environment Agency update, our regular update, pages 45 to 63, which is a report from the agency, and pages 65 to 68, which is a general update on Storm Babette and Henk, which was issued by the agency in December last year. And that came to the Storm Impact Working Group, but it's just, again, part of today's agenda, appreciating that this is the public part of what we're doing rather than those offline deliberations. So, welcome, Morgan. I'll hand over to you to take us through your presentation, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll keep the presentation brief, as I understand there might be a few questions forthcoming. But I provide papers on an update to our key capital schemes throughout Lincolnshire. I've also provided a paper on our maintenance activities, which hopefully members will find useful. Just point out on that, that our administrative area is Lincolnshire and Northamptonshire. So this is the RFCC boundary, so it does pick up some areas of North Lincolnshire and into sort of the Welland and Ning catchments as well, which aren't part of the key county of Lincolnshire. But hopefully that gives a flavour of the sort of activities that are undertaken and the sort of proportion of where the money's spent. Just, and also, as you say, Chair, provided an update there on the recovery work from last winter as well, Storm Babette and Storm Henk. As a summary of that, we received around about £15 million direct from our central capital fund. So this is money diverted nationally from the capital programme to help with that recovery. We received around about £15 million. However, we did identify around about £45 million worth of damage across Lincolnshire. So we're able to do the most pressing schemes, although some of the, as Commissioner Fleetwood sort of mentioned, really, some of the asset damage is outstanding. And that will be prioritised into our normal sort of asset maintenance programme going forward. Just a quick summary of the sort of activities of the last couple of weeks, as always been mentioned. So on the 5th and 6th of January, we received around about 40 to 50 millimetres of rain, fairly widespread across the county and beyond Lincolnshire as well. I know I come back and say this quite often, but we saw some of the highest river levels that we'd seen on some of our gauges. Slightly different gauges in general to the ones we saw in Babette and Henk, probably more some of the higher up in the catchment, particularly around Grantham, some of the upper south 40-foot areas, sort of south west of the county, I suppose you'd say. We issued 36 flood warnings and as been mentioned, you know, we worked in partnership with the local resilience forum as part of the multi-agency response to deal with that. We attended TCGs, which are tactical coordinating groups, and SCG, strategic coordinating groups, with other emergency responders along with many others in this room. Unfortunately, we are aware of a number of properties that flooded through main river flooding, particularly Billingsborough, Grantham, we've mentioned some in the Boston area, Grefford unfortunately, again, and around sort of the Wainefleet and Steeping area. So it's sort of quite a wide event in terms of coverage. Also, some really high levels on watercourses to the north of it. So the Ancombe particularly was quite high as well, the Steeping was, had some overtopping of the Steeping. And as I said, in some of the upper catchments of some of the other watercourses too. I think I'll leave it there, Chair, because I know time's pressing and I know there'd probably be plenty of questions, but happy to take those, of course.
Thank you very much, Morgan. Before we just go to questions, I think just what I take, having read the report, is evidence that, I mean, elements of this I read with genuine delight, and I think it's evidence that you're a genuinely friend of this committee and picking up on the views that have been expressed here time and time again. I just draw attention to page 55 at 9.6, 1.9.6, the paragraph that, you know, that talks about aquatic plants are a valuable part of the ecosystem, however, they can become a problem if their growth affects the passage of water. And maintenance here was taken to take that weed out that was obstructing conveyance. That looks, the picture on the right looks like an absolutely beautiful river. I am so pleased to see that the Environment Agency is doing this level of weeding and trimming and tidying up. And again, at page 1.9, paragraph 1.9.9 at the bottom there, again, a really good example that the agency is doing this work. And I know there's been debates over a long period of time around the need to do this kind of work and I'm just delighted to see it's happening. So thank you. Colleagues, who would like to go first? Commissioner Baxter, then Commissioner Reed, and I will bring Commissioner Austin in then.
Thank you. To be a little bit parochial, I'm looking at two bits particularly. One is 1.4 on page 49, the Maxi Cut, which shows that up to 678 properties are affected in the vicinity of the deepings. And certainly in the recent storms, there were some properties that were very close to being flooded and many thanks to everybody involved, particularly the volunteers that stopped that from happening, both commercial properties and residential properties. Can I ask, the total, it talks about the total project cost of £9.8 million and total partnership funding of £7.3 million. Could I ask who is the partner that is offering £7.3 million? I might have some other opportunities for them. And in paragraph 1.4.2, there's a word 'optioneering'. Is that a typo or is that an actual, has that now entered the English language? And what, is it, it's a real word? Optioneering?
I don't know whether it appears in the dictionary or not, but it's certainly a word that we use a lot and it's within sort of project management circles. So basically, it's looking at all the options.
Okay, thank you.
And on the, sorry, on the partnership funding. So we have access to something called asset replacement allowance. So this is separate to the sort of partnership funding rules and it is something that we can sort of bid into on a sort of a national basis. And that looks at individual assets and for certain assets, we're able to sort of claim some of that or apply for some of that funding.
Smashing, thank you. I hope you will expedite your optioneering for the deepings and hope it comes to fruition soon. And then on page 60, there's some comments about the Grefford Cut, which says that some accumulation has been desilted. You've taken away some of the silt for which some residents of Grefford are very grateful that it wasn't worse than it perhaps could have been, although obviously still flooded. Part of the reason it flooded is because of the Schillingford Gage. In the section 19 report, it says that the gage failed twice in January 2021 and we know it failed again last year and it failed again this time, even though in the section 19 report, it says it will be rectified by the EA. Do you know why it still isn't working?
So from what I understand is the gage is working, it's not displaying on the public website quite as it should. So it's still recording all the levels as it should do, but not displaying those. So our hydrometry and telemetry teams have been investigating that. We've still not got to the bottom of why that's not displaying publicly at the moment.
Sorry, Chair, do you know how long it's likely to take to fix the telemetry that tells people that they're about to be flooded?
No, I haven't got any more information about that. But just to be clear. I can hopefully get you an answer.
And just to be clear on that, you can internally read those gauges and get those updates, it's just not publicly available. You are, that gage is working from your own team's view, you can view that data.
From what I understand, it's working and recording that information. Whether that information, I don't want to give any wrong information, whether that information is directly available via telemetry, I'd have to look into that. But what I understand is that the gage is working and recording the information. However, there is, on the very peak of the hydrograph, as it were, it's struggling to display that. So the hydrometry and telemetry teams have been to site, they put it through the sort of the full cycle and it's recording well.
But is that something that your teams rely on, the data on, in real time, on a regular basis or normally would?
Obviously, all our network of gauges we do rely on and they're there for a purpose. So yes, we will, we will use that gage.
So not to labour the point, part of that purpose is to inform residents of when they're going to be flooded and that part of it was not working.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Reed next, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. First of all, I welcome the update, thank you. And repairs is also due. The Bourno repair has been done. It's of great benefit and comfort for the people in my division. We all have the budget pressures and understand them and the difficulties that the Environment Agency have in matching all the demands that are on it. However, I am really the messenger boy this morning, Mr. Chairman, albeit that I'm part of the Storm Impact Group. We've often discussed the need to all agencies to work better, or anxious that they do, including the Environment Agency and the IDBs, which you've been listening to this morning. As you know, in most recent times, we've had significant overtopping from the South Delve into the Cannick Fen. And this follows locations in the North Cuselham District Council on behalf of Commissioner Ian Carrington and Commissioner Lindsay Corey's division. And these items which arise include, and I have four questions that they would particularly like to have some answers to. So the first one is that the relevant penstocks at Ferry Lane, Washinborough, a notice that Commissioner Fleetwood made reference to, and the Sandhill Beck are operated by permission of the Environment Agency under a written agreement with the IDBs. He's told that it was considerable time before the agency agreed to their being used to relieve the pressure on Cannick Fen and allow some water to move east. However, whilst the spillover at Sandhill Beck, which spills west into the Washinborough catchment was in operation, the penstock, which could have allowed some waters to be moved further east into the Highington/Branson catchment, were never opened. With water entering from both ends, from the Delve in the west and the Beck in the east, the levels into the Cannick and Washinborough catchments built very substantially and very quickly. Could the agency comment on the timing of these sluices and also why the floodwater was not allowed to be moved east of the Sandhill Beck through penstocks which remained closed? A further question to this is what had primary distribution of floodwaters or the possibility of compensation claims? At the moment, the reports, narratives of the IDBs and the agency are in tension and the events of the last 10 days do not suggest that these organisations, whilst staffed by many knowledgeable and highly committed individuals, as of yet, working together optimally in times of crisis. That's the first one. Walking the course, Commissioner.
Commissioner Reed, would it be helpful if we take one at a time? I appreciate.
Yep, I am the messenger boy and there is quite a list.
Morgan.
So first of all, yeah, I understand there is an operating agreement between ourselves and the IDB around those penstocks there. I can't comment on the timings, I haven't obviously got records in front of me to be able to answer that in detail. However, I mean, we do, we do work with the IDB closely in that location. I will, I can take it away and have a look on those precise timings. And I know there are sensitivities both upstream and downstream of those penstocks. So obviously, if you open those penstocks, water goes further downstream and there can be issues in those sort of lower sort of reaches. And if you, and if you, and if you don't open them, there's issues sort of upstream of that. One of the sort of the core, I suppose, issues around there is also potentially flooding of the, I think it's the Sandhill Beck Pumping Station, which is one of the IDBs' key assets there. So obviously, we do work closely with them to try and reduce the impacts to all parties there.
Thank you. So therefore, we look forward to an answer on part of the claims as to why the operation didn't open as asked for and they'll look forward to that response. And number two is that, walking the course, it is noted that significant slumping on parts of the southern South Delve dike, including some deep holes, which I'm told are very recent. However, I also say that the damage, I'm told, resulted from Storm Babette, was reported to the agency at the time, but has yet to be repaired. The question is, can the agency comment on the repairs and maintenance? And will they now agree that the vegetation and silting in the Delve contributes to its increasingly prosperity to overtop?
So certainly during, the week before last, I concur, I was in the county emergency centre and I believe the police had drones in that area and we could see the overtopping happening sort of quite clearly there. We since had asset inspectors out, actually during the flooding and since, and we do concur, yeah, there are considerable areas of slumping there. We also sort of noticed like piping, which is water coming through the embankment in that location. And, you know, and as I said previously, with the sort of the recovery paper from last year, we received £15 million from an estimate of around about £45 million worth of damage. And certainly that area there was one of those locations which unfortunately we couldn't fund to repair those assets in that location, largely due to the fact that, you know, it's in one of those locations we struggle to find maintenance funding for because of the way the funding formula works around the need to sort of demonstrate sort of properties impacted. So it's a very challenging area to maintain and to get the money to maintain in that location.
Okay. So the third question is that there's some very marked irregularities in the height of the southern Delve dike, especially west of the bypass where it's overtopped into the Cannick Fen. Could those areas not be built back up and hence increased protection?
I think this probably goes back to my previous point, really. We understand there are low points in that sort of self-delved embankment. Again, we find it difficult to raise the funds to fill in those low spots. So like I say, it's a challenging area to get the money to both sort of maintain and to make improvements there.
Okay. And finally, you'll be pleased to know, can you answer or elaborate, please, on the overtopping of the Delve which resulted in flooding affecting the Cannick Water Recycling Plant? DEFRA issued an urgent warning to local landowners and not to allow livestock grazing in the affected areas due to the risk of the river fluke. However, I am not aware of any specific warning that was issued to the public or local institutions. For example, Washinborough Parish Council's playing fields were inundated. or local institutions. For example, Washinborough Parish Council's playing fields were inundated, but the peace, the parish council had no notification regarding contaminated waters. Would Matthew, sorry, I'm perhaps moving boundaries here, or other officers please confirm while significant foul water releases did take place, whether the LRF was aware, whether, and whether LCC was officially notified and whether any specific warnings were issued to the public and bodies such as parish councils? The smell of raw sewage on the wide, uh, swaths of land remain very strong, as does the visual evidence. I appreciate that the general advice tells the public that floodwaters may be contaminated, but i- if significant volumes of sewage came out of the local works, surely a specific warning to those in the vicinity would have been merited, not least to the parish councils who, whose potential role with LCC is seeking to enhance. Can you elaborate on that or perhaps it might be a, a written response that would be worthy?
I'm, I'm happy for whoever to have a go at that, Matt, or-
So I think the two issues you're raising here, it's important to understand we've got two assets affected. You've got Cannick Water Recycling Centre, which is a big one. Um, the total flow that that can manage is around 1.4 cubic metres a second, which is 1,400 litres a second. Um, and that goes into the South Delft. And then you've got what we know as Washinborough Water Recycling Centre, which goes into, uh, the Sandhill Beck. Um, I believe it's the one at Washinborough where there was, uh, debris seen floating around. And that's simply because the Sandhill Beck was so high that, um, Washinborough Sewage Works requires a completely free discharge. And I believe that in, at, at point, Sandhill Beck was actually coming back up into the, the works itself and flooding the works. Um, the water is extremely dilute. When we, when we use the phrase raw sewage, um, it, it makes it out to be that it's a hot summer's day and it's literally what people are flushing down the toilet. It's incredibly, incredibly dilute. Um, all of our unconsented spills are reported to the Environment Agency. And if there's any breach of our permit or consent, the Environment Agency do take strong action against angling water for that. In terms of the warning and informing element, there is general guidance, as you've alluded to, that floodwaters may be contaminated. Um, but to directly answer your question, we did not notify the LRF, uh, of the possibility of, 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 that there may be a heavily diluted sewage on, on, on agricultural land. And perhaps something we could maybe look at for, for, for the next event as a lessons learned.
Thank you. I've got councillor Austin, then councillor Hill.
Um, thank you, Chairman, for inviting me to this meeting. Um, I unfortunately got pushed off this committee by a different party, a different group, but I bounced back again for a day or two. Right. I will, I don't need to set the scene really, do I? Because there was the heavy rain and melting snow, but the south 40-foot drain overtopped in one place in the early hours of the 7th of January. This was on the very outskirts of Boston. There was no adequate warning. One alert that suggested they wouldn't be doing any more, um, uh, sorry, one warning, no adequate alert, but they just said they won't be issuing any more. They don't expect ex, um, it didn't expect internal flooding to be, um, occurring. And it didn't even suggest really into Boston itself. Right. Thirty-five properties were flooded internally, some of those to a depth of 18 inches. Now, because of the nature of those properties, they are small Victorian, oh, let's say circa 1900, those houses, that row of houses were built. And there's been no history of flooding within the living memory in those properties. But because they're small, they've no extra rooms they can go to. And they've been advised, or insurance companies have advised them that they, they won't be, um, able to inhabit those properties for up to six months. And it was soul destroying the next morning, seeing often entire possessions, settees the lot going into a skip on that road because it didn't leave any of those properties untouched. Now, I've set the scene. Some of this is now going to be repetitive. Um, first of all, the two pumps in the Black Sluice Pumping Station. Could this have been prevented if those two electric pumps, um, in the Black Sluice Pumping Station had been in service and up view, uh, and, and used? Um, it's interesting that I've noted this morning, looking through the papers, that this is something Black Sluice obviously would have liked. And it's on page 43. So my first question then is, is the reinstatement of these pumps seriously being considered, please?
Um, councillor Austin, do you mean the English Electric Diesel? They're, they're not electric powered?
They are. In, in English Electric Diesel, which in my mind is a little bit of a contradiction, but I do understand. I've had it explained to me. Um, and can my, um, driver just confirm those? Are they correct or?
Well, there are two pumps that are-
There's two pumps that can, could be, uh, reinstated. Okay. Um, I'm not a professional on drainage engineers. Okay. Right. So-
Shall we take your questions one at a time?
Right. So first of all, would it have been prevented if those two English Electric Diesel pumps were in service? And secondly, the second question, is the reinstatement of these pumps being considered, please?
Thank you, Morgan.
Okay. And I think there was a, there was a question there about flood warning as well, wasn't there? So I'll, I'll, I'll cover that, I'll cover that too.
I've got a transcript of that. You can read if you wish.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm happy to, to cover the, I, I, I asked about that first. I'll cover the flood warning aspect. So for that area of Boston, um, I suppose take a step back. All, all flood warning areas are things that have to be sort of set up in advance. So, um, there's quite a bit of work to do in terms of mapping, defining the area, defining the sort of the properties that would be, would receive a, a flood warning. Um, and not every area has that previously pre-set up. So all the flood warnings we issued, there's been quite a considerable amount of work being done in the past to set those areas up. Um, and, uh, and sometimes areas don't receive a flood warning because we haven't got necessarily sort of telemetry gauges and that sort of thing in, 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 in place. All that other areas have, have been a sort of greater priority in, in the past to, to develop the, the warning for those areas. Um, so, um, for whatever reason, I've not quite got to the bottom of it yet, that we haven't got a, a flood warning area predetermined and set up there. So there, there would not have been possible to send a flood warning in that location. However, that is something we will certainly look, look into going forward to see how rapidly that we can create that, do the work that creates that area. So that future sort of flood warning duty officers have that, that, that option at their disposal. When it hits the right trigger levels at the relevant gauges, they're able to issue that, that flood warning. And that, that'll be some work which will, which will be undertaken, um, in, in the coming weeks.
All right. Thank you for that.
On the, on the, so the, the actual, uh, pumping station itself, as, as you know, the, the pumping station was, was decommissioned, um, a number of years ago. Um, and that was , uh, as a result of, um, well, I suppose firstly, because the station was getting very, very old, um, and expensive to, for, for the upkeep, um, there was a, you know, obviously the requirement to update and refurbish that. So some work was undertaken at the time in partnership with a number of organisations to look at, uh, to look at that. And some modelling work was undertaken at that time. Um, that, that work indicated that, um, that there would be, from the sort of the flooding that was identified as a result of that work, that would generate insufficient funds for the, for the refurbishment of that, that pumping station. And other options were looked at in terms of discharge of the water. So they looked at, um, using the, the navigation lock more and the, obviously, sort of honing in on the, on the sluice gate as well, uh, in combination with working with the IDB to sort of limit the amount of water that comes down the catchment. Um, so at, at that, that time as well, this, this, some of the work that was undertaken did identify that, you know, under the very, very sort of extreme flood events, like we've seen in, in the last week or so, that there would be flooding could be possible in, in those locations. Obviously, it's early days and I've, I've, I've had teams out there, you know, looking, doing some of the sort of the initial sort of survey work. Um, we will, you know, get that evidence together and put that together to try and understand, you know, is it mirroring what we expected at the time? So like I said, we do, from that modelling, from understanding that they did identify that there could be some overtopping of some of those sort of lowland embankments. So we need to sort of look at that again, see if it's mirroring what the, what the study at that time, um, suggested. What I would say though is that as with, you know, a number of, we, we touched on again today, is that, you know, flood risk management schemes are, are incredibly expensive, in, in particularly pumping station, you know, uh, in, in these sort of areas. And, you know, it would be a, a, a challenge to get enough funding together to reinstigate that pumping station. We'll put the evidence together and, you know, we, we'll take it from there. But I mean, I, I think I'd probably point out at this stage that, you know, that the existing pumping station, a lot of the pumps, I think probably all of the pumps are probably, um, beyond their sort of usable, um, condition. And going forward, it'd be a really difficult task, I think, to reinstigate.
Right. May I continue? Can I just sort of add an aside? It was probably easier getting the barrier for my residents the other side against the river than it's going to be for this, but I don't give up easily. Right. Now then, the water going through, as you mentioned, that navigation lock, the nav- the water going through that lock, both the gates were open. It was just going straight out into the river. And I have never seen water flowing at that rate before. Now, all right, it was exceptional weather circumstances, but the water level in the south 40-foot drain is largely controlled by the many pumps that feed into it from all the minor drains, um, higher up the catchment now then. On this occasion, why weren't they switched off earlier? You must have been able to see what was happening to the water level. So on this occasion, why weren't they switched off earlier, further upstream to prevent this overtopping and the flooding of these properties?
So from what I understand, the, so there are several inputs into the south 40-foot system. As, as you say, there are a number of pumping stations upstream controlled by, um, Black Sluice, Black Sluice Internal Drainage Board. Um, as I said, we, 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 early stages of investigations, but what I understand so far, information from Black Sluice is that they were turned off at the, uh, uh, appropriate times, um, at the right trigger levels. It's also worth pointing out that there was, you know, a, a vast amount of rainfall over the catchment. And there are a number of watercourses that feed into that system which are unattenuated. So they just kind of, from the high level carriers, from the, from the sort of, uh, to the, um, to the east of Grantham that feed directly into the south 40 foot. So that, that, those flows would be sort of unchecked, as it were. So, uh, but again, you know, as I said, it's early stages. We will work in partnership with, with Black Sluice IDB to, to look at all those issues going forward.
I have one last question, which I hope will be fairly simple. Will the low point in the bank, in that vicinity of the, where the flooding occurs, um, will the low point of the south 40-foot drain where it was over, where it's overtopped, will, sorry, something disturbed me just then. Was it a, oh, sorry. I'll start again. Um, will the low point in the, on the bank of the south 40-foot drain where the overtopping occurred, will it be raised, please?
So this, this is, this is in the Wyburton Road area?
Sorry. Location is very, very important because we have a Wyburton Low Road, we have a Wyburton West Road. They do different purposes and there are different waterways they're concerned with. Wyburton West Road, yes, there is a low point, obviously, because those were all the houses that were-
Yes.
-flooded. That's where the overtopping was. It isn't in Wyburton itself. It's part of the town of Boston.
So, so on, on that, so obviously there is a, we have had evidence that there was sort of over, overtopping of that location. And also some evidence that there was some seepage in that location as well. So that's water coming through the, through the embankment too. So that will form part of our, uh, investigations and, and presumably part of the sort of the section 19 investigation as well. But certainly, that's the sort of thing our teams were looking for evidence for last week. Um, we need that evidence. We need to put that together with some of the sort of the, the modelling data. And , uh, obviously I can't give any guarantees at the moment, but that would form part of our thinking going forward. You know, if we were, were put in any funding bids for capital funds to improve that embankment, uh, in that location. So I can't say, uh, for definite at the moment, but we certainly will be investigating whether that's something we want to put into our, our capital programme going forward.
Oh, thank you. And if you, and when you do inspect, I'd be very happy to be, accompany you. Thank you.
No, thank, thank you for the offer. And, and with, with all these, with all these locations, often the, the local information, um, is, is really important. Obviously, the local communities are out on the ground. They see things happening. So any evidence, photographs, um, that sort of thing, particularly timings of when things happened are really important to our teams. And, and certainly, you know, as we go forward, make those connections and we'd, we'd gratefully receive that information.
Thank you and thank you. Um, just while we're on this point of the subject, I feel, there are some questions that need a little bit further exploring around that pumping station. I mean, just to pick up on, um, local knowledge and background, I think it's worth bearing in mind that the original pumping station, which was installed in 1946 by the Wetham and Steeping Catchment Commissioners, um, was done so, um, recognising a need that had been identified as early as the 1930s and delayed, um, being built because of the war. Um, but a, a need that was identified to have pumping capacity at the end of the south 40 foot to get rid, um, of, of water at the stages of the tide where it couldn't be sluiced. Um, the small pumping stations which councillor Austin referred to in the Black Sluice Catchment, which most of which were installed, uh, between, in the 1950s and 1960s, was the reason that the additional two engines, the two English electrics on the higher deck, uh, were installed in the 1960s. Um, again, recognising the need that as more water is needed to be pumped into that, um, into the south 40 foot, there was a, um, altogether greater need to evacuate water out of it. And it's important, I think, to recognise that from 1964 until 19, until 2013, um, notwithstanding the navigation lock simply takes the place of a sluice that previously existed, um, the, that, that location had a pumping station with 60 cubic metres of water, um, per second capacity, 60 tonnes of water capacity, uh, at the pumping station and two sluice gates. Um, since 2013, the three, um, original Rushton engines, um, have been offline, um, allegedly through damage in the 2013 tidal inundation. Um, I must say, I have always been a little bit sceptical, um, as to what particular damage a bit of salt water flushing through a station could really do, um, to that kind of engineering where most of the, um, most of the bearings are, um, are, are going to be lubricated when working and there'll be oil residue around those critical components. Um, but obviously I recognise the decision, um, that was taken in 2018 to decommission, um, the whole station, including the two at that point functional English electric engines, uh, which councillor Austin was referring to. And I, I mean, I can't help thinking that our ancestors and predecessors were not in the bu- business of building, um, 60 cubic, um, 60 cubic pumping stations if they didn't need to do it. And I was relatively new to all of this when the decision to decommission was taken, was originally taken. And it's very difficult- was originally taken, and it's very difficult as a relatively new councillor to argue against the expanse of evidence and modelling which is being put forward to say that an alternative could be considered. But I think it is really worth bearing in mind that on three occasions, in nineteen sixty eight, in nineteen seventy seven and nineteen eighty one, all five engines ran and pumped together. And I, it really does worry me that we are in the business of making perfect the enemy of the good with this stuff, that we don't, that on three occasions, that pumping capacity was needed. And it's very, very difficult to get my head around saying, we can't, we can't afford to keep it, we need to decommission it, we can't afford to replace it. But then again, it's mostly there, it just leaves maintaining in a state where it can run when it needs to run, and if that is once every ten years, then that once every ten years, that that installation can't afford not to be there. And I just wonder whether the Environment Agency, and I appreciate, this shouldn't be on your shoulders, Morgan, but the Environment Agency more broadly recognises the significant reputational challenge that comes with having thirty five properties flooded half a mile from a pumping station that was decommissioned a few years ago, and the, and decommissioned, as we've heard today, effectively on cost grounds. And given the challenges that we know we're expecting with, with, with rising sea levels, with increased events such as this, and I know we're talking about this being a rainfall event, the, this wasn't even a storm, this wasn't a Babette or a Henk, this was just a very quickly reacting catchment to a set of circumstances. If we are expecting this more often, then surely the argument for having a pumping station that's operational, the pumping station that is already built, and it may be a little bit expensive to run, but we've heard already today, the cost of replacement is, of that kind of structure is well into the many tens of millions of pounds. The thing's built, it just needs recommissioning and operating. And I suppose my final question would be, do we know what decommissioning work has taken place, what has been taken out, what has been uninstalled? I last visited in twenty, in September of twenty twenty two, and it looked like most of it was still there.
Thank you, Chair. So there is a number of questions in that, I won't be able to give a full answer to all of them. Yeah, pumping stations, as you say, are very expensive to sort of operate, own and repair and refurbish, as we've seen across the county. That's not money that we hold locally, and it's money that we'll have to bid for as, as all risk management authorities have to bid in for, for those, those funds. I believe when it was looked at in twenty eighteen, that, that a bid couldn't be put together because it just didn't sort of stack up at the, at the time. And, you know, that sort of grant funding wouldn't have been available to, to maintain that or to refurbish that pumping station. What we, what I do know is that a lot of those engines in there, if not all of the engines, are past their serviceable life. So similar to sort of the issues that are happening at sort of Hobhold Pumping Station at the moment, they're very, very sort of old engines, the parts for them are, I suppose you agree, Peter, are virtually sort of non-existent and, you know, I think they're basically, they, they effectively sort of, you know, what was used in ships around that sort of period. So they're not off the shelf, off the peg sort of parts. So you would be looking at a sort of a total sort of refurbishment within that sort of environment, potentially with, with new engines. From what I understand, the existing engines are, you know, I don't think it would be possible to reinstigate them, fire them up, as it were. So, you know, it would be a very sort of challenging project to put that station back online. We will cover this obviously in further investigations, but I think probably the, 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 the business case that we would have to put together would be a very challenging one, one to, one to write, I think. So as I said, we, we will investigate it, we will double check to see if what is happening there is broadly in line with what was predicted around the time that it was decommissioned in twenty eighteen.
Thank you. I, I struggle to accept that those engines are impossible or beyond starting up. Certainly the English Electric, which have only been out of commission since twenty eighteen, there's absolutely no reason why they wouldn't start up and pump tomorrow if the fuel's pumped up and everything just checked over. Even the three old Rustons, which, as I've just said, have run on three occasions since nineteen sixty six, their hours, their operating hours are infinitesimally small. They have done so little work, you're dealing with three what are basically brand new engines, even though they have sat there and not, you know, for so long. I'm familiar with the three engines on the Witham Fort at Hobhold Station. The issues with Hobhold Station are much more complicated than simply the age of those engines. The engines, incidentally, at Hobhold are three Allens, they're two strokes. They, one has done, I think somewhere in the region of nine or 10,000 hours, the, the one that's done the most has done somewhere in the region of twenty eight, nine, thirty thousand hours now, it had done twenty seven last time I looked at the logbook. The engines in Black Sluice have done in the low, in, in, if they've done fifteen hundred hours a piece of Ruston, they haven't done any more. I'm, this, this is my point on we mustn't, on where I feel there is a danger of making perfect the enemy of the good, saying that in a perfect world you would replace them. It's not a perfect world, they are there and they could run, and if you left me and one or two other keen people in there for a weekend, I would very happily give my time to prove the point, because I work on this stuff as a hobby. But appreciating we're going on, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. I was a bit surprised last night, actually, on Look North, there was a spokesperson from the Environment Agency saying, due to some government initiative, that everybody's going to work together now and it's all going to be better. Well, forgive me, but I thought actually we, it's not perfect, but under the aegis of this committee, all the agencies are working together, officers then go and do their best. I don't think the problem is not working together, I think the problem is just finding the money to do all this stuff, which is the problem we've all got. And I think it does, the coordination probably needs to be about when we're making bids to government, we all need to work together, because it's no good, you know, having rival bids from rival organisations in Lincolnshire, and probably means all will fail. So I think there is a key issue of coordination. Obviously, the rainfall on sixth of January, I think we had two inches in as many hours on top of the, the snow, melting snow, so obviously the speed with which it came, and of course it wasn't forecast either, so it was a bit of a surprise, well, did surprise people, and it sort of came and went fairly quickly. But unfortunately, particularly in my area, and it seemed to pick on my area, I don't know why, there's lots of people who've been flooded, and you feel, really feel for them, but those people, some people have been flooded again, you know, they've just got all their furniture back in from the insurance, and then it's they start all over again. And I can't stress how depressing and annoying that is. So I think the issue is, I understand, I hear what people are saying about, well, let's do the review and this, there is a timing issue here, because people understand me very upset, and for example, in my area, everybody's saying, oh, it's because of the pumps. I don't know whether that's, the pumps being decommissioned, is that true or not? And obviously, I've had from last year, I think I had about ten section nineteen reports in my area, because it's, because of the nature of it. And they very much refer to the, I agree with most of them, they very much refer to what happens on the individual property, what, you know, was it to do with curbs or could this ditch be improved and all the rest of it? What none of these seem to address at all is the broader issue of the main watercourses. So for example, in Billingsborough, I mean, the water, obviously there's an overtopping, the water obviously wasn't getting away, was it the issue of getting down to the forty foot? Was it the forty foot, which actually was the highest ever recorded level on that Monday? Is it the pumps? Is, is it stuff in Boston? And I would point out, obviously, the, obviously there's a disagreement now between Black Sluice, we, we didn't agree with the turning off of the pumps. I mean, I understand the, the view was that they weren't used very often, but they, they're there for when they're needed. But again, I just think, I suppose the question is, how long will it take before at least we can understand what happened, apart from there was a lot of water, and what are the practical images? Because I don't know whether, you know, if, if there are, these things are never simple, are they? But at least if we know what happened, and then we can at least be, help people to understand what happened, and then at least have a plan to say what needs to happen to do it. I mean, and there's all the issue of, so remember with the conversation with the Black Sluice pumps, or the EA pumps, there was discussion about whether more landowners should actually be, you know, precepted on high ground and stuff like that. So I think it's not, I mean, there is an issue of getting more money from government in particular. As you know, Chairman, we've put an extra six million pounds in to try and help, but whether there's other mechanisms whereby these areas which are flooded, because it keeps on happening, doesn't it? And the forty foot is always a, a big risk. We were very lucky two weeks ago that it didn't overtop, I think in order to view that it would. But it all goes, and I think as councillor Austin says, you've got to look at the whole catchment area, and I think it's a conversation that needs to be had, an understanding of what exactly happened, because I still don't know, and how long will these reviews take? Because I don't think people who've been flooded and villages that have been flooded are going to want to wait another year while, you know, gently everybody has a little discussion about it. So I suppose my question through you to the various agencies, how quickly will we get clear answers as to what they think happened, what the problem was, apart from too much water? Because I don't think we want to be waiting a year or so. I think we need interim answers pretty quickly about what went wrong or what happened, and then further on, what could be done if you, if the money was available. So that's my question, Chairman.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yes, Chair, so we are undertaking what we're calling rapid reviews. So this is, we basically had our staff out on site to a number of these locations where we're trying to get, as I said, sort of get, get the evidence together, try and talk to some local individuals that have been impacted or have knowledge of the situation. Our teams are currently undertaking those at the moment. We're hoping to get those out in the next few weeks, certainly not sort of, not, not sort of that sort of years time scale. But obviously, that's dependent on any sort of rainfall events we get in the, in the next few weeks that sort of, in order to sort of divert our staff away, you know, to doing that sort of instant response and immediate recovery sort of activity. But certainly, we do have, we do, we have had teams out carrying out that initial review with a view to, to having some better answers in the next few weeks, I'll say. I can't give an exact date for it, because it might depend on the location as well and how easy it is to sort of assimilate some of that data with, with things like models and, and other sort of technical information. But it's certainly something we're not wanting to sort of extrapolate over, over a long period of time.
Matthew, would you like to come in on some of that, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'll just give some perspective from Lincolnshire County Council's point of view and just recognise the comments that councillor Hill has made there, that there's the section nineteen investigations that obviously look at a fairly localised issues with the direct impacts to individuals and properties, but there's a much bigger picture at play here, which is obviously, needs to be looked at across a multitude of organisations with a wider river, river network and watercourse network. We recognise that, you know, flooding is absolutely devastating for people, for those that's been affected, even more so when it's one year on from having, having suffered that previously. With regards to section nineteen investigations, the approach that we're taking to those people who have been unfortunately affected again, is that we will be looking at doing a short addendum report to the main report that was undertaken in Babett and Henk. Actually, in many cases, because of the scale of those that we've been dealing with, a lot of those recommendations still stand and the causation of the issues is very, very similar, if not the same. So what we won't be doing is taking a lot of time doing full formal investigations when a lot of the issues are actually known, and what we want to be doing is quite rightly concentrating on where there are any localised maintenance repairs, working with local landowners on riparian watercourses and obviously with colleagues for those wider issues that has quite rightly been identified. So certainly from the section nineteen process, I'd just like to confirm that it is very much focusing on now the recommendations and moving forward and not spending that time investigating again what we already know.
Thank you. Would you like to come back, councillor Hill?
I think that's fine, I think we just need to get to what is the status pretty quickly. You know, trouble is, I'll take Billingsborough as an example, the section nineteen is totally, report is totally irrelevant to what happened last week, but, you know, as it was talking about limited properties last year. The only thing I would say is, I think I ought to pay tribute to all the communities who came out, and it is very, it's a terrible situation, but all the communities and villages in their areas where people flooded, they've all turned out and helped out, which is a very, a silver lining on a very black cloud. So I think that we should acknowledge that as well. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. I have following speakers, I've got councillor Bunny, Hags, Hobson, Ashley Morris and Skinner. So councillor Bunny, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a very quick one, I'd like to echo your comments at the beginning about keeping the rivers clear of weeds, that certainly has made a difference, I think, in the River A's area. I do wonder though, sometimes, and I'm welcome, the fact that it says in the report that it's an annual maintenance, so that it does occur every year. The question might be, when's the best time of the year to do it? I know we do it in the autumn, possibly for nature reasons and so on, but if you do get heavy rainstorms in August and the reeds haven't been cleared, that would hold some of that water back and prevent it going down the river to Brandy Wharf, where it might make other differences. So that's one question. The second actually is for another area completely, it is to do with Scotter, where I understand there has been ongoing flooding over the years, which the Environment Agency are working on. My colleague on the district council who represents that area is quite concerned that progress doesn't seem to be made over the years, and is of the impression that sometimes nature, whether it be water voles or whatever, get in the way of the work that is being carried out, and this can cause delayed problems. And when your house is being flooded time and time again, it does become, for some, a thin excuse.
Thank you, councillor Bunny. So yeah, I, in a previous job, I worked on issues around Scotter for many years, and they're, and they're quite complex. Key issue being the few number of houses versus the, the cost of actually carrying out a scheme that would have a, you know, a demonstrable impact on the flooding to those properties. So I think at the time, we looked at an upstream sort of storage reservoir, something of that, that order, and the, the sort of the, unfortunately, the, the numbers didn't sort of stack up at the time. So I know since that time, the local team have looked at natural flood management measures upstream, and I think from memory, it would require something like about fifty different sort of interventions in the, in the, the catchment upstream of sort of sizeable sort of flood storage, sort of natural flood management sort of measures. So what I understand is that the, in partnership with the Scuntop and Gainsborough Internal Drainage Board, there is a sort of a maintenance programme which is being overtaken over a number of years, and they're partway through that, that agreement to, to do that. I, I know your sort of comment on sort of water voles and other sort of protected species. Our, our top priority is people and properties, however, we can't break the law. So we will have to work within the confines of the law to be able to undertake work at the, sort of the appropriate time and with the appropriate mitigation measures in place. So yeah, we will always try and do the work that's necessary to protect people and property, but obviously we do have to bear in mind what, what the law says about some of these things. In terms of the right time of year, we, we are core, I mean, there's different types of maintenance, which, which obviously are better at different types, types of year, are mostly a sort of de-weeding work or that sort of work would probably take place around the sort of the autumn time, after you've had the main sort of growth throughout the summer and you're trying to clear it ahead of, ahead of winter. Obviously, with a very large patch, you can't all do it on the same day, on the most optimum day, so there is a, a programme of, of trying to do that in the most effective way possible. Obviously, grass cutting takes place throughout the, sort of the summer months to protect the grass sward on our, our embankments. the grass sward on our embankments, where we're able to do that. And the things such as the tree and bushing works, we generally wait until the sort of the bird nesting season has been complete around sort of mid-July. And then we undertake that work throughout the summer months to undertake that, kind of sort of like, sort of siding back on watercourses where we're able to do that.
Thank you. I mean, just coming in on that, how many applications has the agency made in Lincolnshire over the last year for effectively dispensations under the Wildlife Act because of the perceived danger to crops, which is one of the reasons that is acceptable for occasionally making those kind of disturbances, where work needs to be done in order to give that protection? How many applications have been made, and how many have been refused?
I don't know the precise numbers, Chair. I can follow that up for you afterwards. Obviously, in terms of sort of badger mitigation, we are licensed by Natural England to undertake works as part of a larger licence, so to speak. So we do have that dispensation. But in terms of the numbers for around that sort of crop aspect of it, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I'd have to check up on that.
Thank you. I think I would appreciate, and I'm sure the committee would appreciate knowing that information, because if, for example, you're making applications and they're being refused, then that's a decision I understand for Natural England, not yourselves. And maybe they need to explain what criteria they're using. But it would be useful to know how many times permission's been sought. And actually, I'd expand that to include wherever there are permissions available under legislation to allow intervention to take place at the risk of disturbing either birds or bird nests or animals, and how often those permissions have been granted against refusal. Thank you for that. I've got councillor Hags next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make an observation before I ask Morgan the question that I was going to ask. And that was regarding the Black Slough pumping station. But even if something like that only needs using on very rare occasions, to my mind, doesn't mitigate how it should be decommissioned. And I would be very nervous if that continues. And I'd certainly like the EA to look at it again, even if it's just money that is the issue. I'd like, I'd like the EA to consider that further. Moving on to my question is regarding, thank you for the list of watercourses that you haven't got funding to repair, which the Storrs Impact Group got last week, is that those watercourses, have the landowners or will the landowners and the surrounding properties be made aware of those instances so that they can plan for any future difficulties themselves? And if not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hags. We have had a, as a result of the flooding last year, we have had a communications team that's been sending updates to affected landowners. Now, that's, I have to say, that's where we have had works were planned to keep up those sort of landowners updated. So the remaining ones are where we've had issues such as slippage, and perhaps the damage isn't as apparent. I'll have to take that one back and understand that one a little bit more around sort of the quantum of the ask. It is a challenge right across Lincolnshire with a, what shall we say? It's an increasing challenge to maintain assets to their construction standard or to a required condition. And that is a sort of a situation which is a challenge year on year with more sort of funding constraints. So I'll take it away and understand how we're communicating that to the wider to landowners. Because as you can understand, there's quite a number of locations impacted. We have two thousand, two thousand two hundred kilometres of raised embankment throughout Lincolnshire. And it's a challenge to maintain all of those to the required condition.
If I may come back, Chairman. I've got one of the, my main interest in this is, I've got one of those in my patch. And I didn't want to contact the landowner if the EA had already been round and, or communicated with them to tell them that their land is at more risk now than it was before. So you've answered my question of what I should do in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hobson, please.
Thank you very much. Succinct question, hopefully not quite such a concise answer, though. Thank you for the report regarding the updates since the winter of twenty-three, twenty-four, and thank you for the work that you've been doing. The one thing I noticed isn't included at all in there, which did quite surprise me, and I'd hopefully like an update as to what has taken place over the last sort of twelve, fourteen months or so, is work that's taken place in and around Horn Castle, regarding any work that's been done on or updates to EA assets in and around Horn Castle, please.
Chair, I'm having to take that question now. I know the county council are coming on to Horn Castle in a short while, so up to you.
Have a few to answer on how you need, and we can also pick up later if relevant.
Okay, thank you. So certainly, after the storm Bebette flooding, we identified a number of improvements to the operation of the reservoir, which were put in place quite rapidly after that. So that work's been completed.
Thank you. Councillor Ashley Morris, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure you're well aware that the Black Slough is going to rear its head again. Having been, a second we heard what had happened, and it was very obvious the night before, having stood on Chain Bridge and watched what looked like an absolute torrent almost covering the arches, I went with councillor Ashton and my colleague councillor Austin to see what we could do. I mean, based on the fact that we're obviously on this committee, and there was a flood. The most, several points were made by people there. They got text messages at two in the morning. One wonderful comment was that we realised something was wrong when the cat got on the bed and it was soaking wet. People didn't know. They saw fire engines outside and panicked reasonably. I would have thought the fact that small properties are on the edge of a potential overtopping incident in the past. I mean, I've seen the South Forty Foot High before. It would just make sense, in common sense, to say, well, let's put these on whatever list we need for some sort of alert. It shouldn't need modelling and committees and consideration. It should be sort of what feels to me like the obvious. But I mean, that's just a sort of a comment on that. One thing, the levels in the South Forty Foot, were they lowered in anticipation of this recent flood? Or did everyone think it wasn't going to happen? Because it was pretty obvious. I mean, we went there and didn't interview people. We went there and lug wet carpet out and helped at least, you know, there were skips. Boston Borough had, obviously knew almost immediately, and there were big skips there for people's furniture. And we just helped. That was all you could do. But over and over again, you hear the same thing. I mean, you're going to end up with the unedifying sight of councillor Austin and myself chained to the railings, I think, at Black Slough. I mean, very, very simply, and I'm sure everyone knows this, Black Slough can pump against the tide. So if there's a high tide and high water, it can get enough out so that this wouldn't have happened. And unfortunately, it swirled, these are Edwardian cottages, and every so often, there's a gap. So the water swirled in the front and the back. So nobody could do a thing. And obviously, they healthily washed out their sewers. So that there was all sorts floating about. This thing about, you know, are we going to do this quickly? We're going to, we need this done quickly. And Black Slough, having been there, we went to an open day, we went to all sorts. Surely, two pumps could be left on standby. That's not massive. I mean, it doesn't need new double glazing, and this updated and that updated. I mean, I'm sure you'd better say to me, oh, yes, it does. But the pumps themselves, the big lumps in the ground, I mean, you know, I mean, around seventy-year-old cars. You know, age isn't a great thing. If they're in good nick and they've not been used very often, then there's no compelling reason that I can see that the engines can't be recommissioned. If two of those had been working, that would have been two inches of water, not the thick end of two foot in those houses. So if we can do something quickly and come back to us and actually, I've had a lot of times, and not you personally, on committees, oh, we'll come back to you with, and it doesn't sort of happen. And, you know, those people were in dire straits. There was Christmas presents floating around. It was an awful thing, and nobody knew. And there's not much they could have done. And we gave out information about the flood doors that you can get to put in. Because when you've got a property of that nature, it's long and thin, you've got a back door and a front door, you've not got a huge amount of exciting stuff like patio doors that won't floodproof very easily. But they could have been floodproofed to a large extent. But, I mean, I'm simply saying, really, more than anything else, I mean, I don't think those properties were even considered, or Boston was even considered. And the twenty eighteen sort of decommissioning, that was sort of thought to benefit a few properties in the fens, but not right in the town centre. And the final thing, the irony for those people, if they go in the upstairs rooms, you can look at Black Slough's pump, sitting there, doing absolutely nothing. So I think the need for speed is really what I'm sort of asking you to take on board. Those pumps, none of us, I mean, councillor Ashton, myself and various colleagues have all said, you know, I mean, give us a sort of, you know, decent sized grease gun and give us a weekend, and we'll see what we can do for you. So, I mean, really, that was, and that will only get worse. I mean, my side, councillor Austin and I share Black Slough's pump, literally half and half. The other side of the drain, they were worried stiff, and they got sort of a bit of seepage, but not anything like as much as obviously, Weverton West Road. So apart from anything else, that locates it for you perfectly. If you look out the back of Black Slough, on the left, it's the flood. Okay? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, councillor. And I think what we would say on the back of that is, we do recognise the need to do this quite rapidly, to address all those questions that you have there around how easy would it be to reinstate the pumping station. We talked about costs earlier, I think councillor Hill mentioned, you know, how much do these things cost? So we need to, we need to get those answers quite rapidly. We will revisit the previous reports, bring those up to today's values, and then we can all see what it is that we've got to deal with. Happy for you to scrutinise those reports. Perhaps if I arrange a meeting with yourself and councillor Austin, we can come and talk to you about that when we've completed those.
Thank you. I think strictly speaking, councillor Austin has the Ruston, and you have the English Electric. The, just distilling from some of those, I think really the key points that I certainly do anticipate an answer to is whether the water levels in the South Forty Foot were indeed lowered in anticipation of that flood event, or whether this is one of those incidences which it weren't foreseen, and it couldn't have been foreseen, in which case perhaps the twenty eighteen modelling is questionable, if we've now got an example of an occurrence which that system perhaps reacted in a way that wasn't anticipated and couldn't be anticipated, which is perhaps why our ancestors put pumps in. And also, I remember enough of the debate in twenty eighteen, that the properties which would be at increased risk of flooding were, as councillor Ashley Morris identifies, in the fens. There was never, as I recall, any suggestion that properties in Boston were put at increased risk of flooding. And I am pretty sure there'd been a lot of agitated people at the time, were that flood risk identified and publicised, given that the property level protection was talked about for those Fendland properties, which were due to be put at risk because effectively the Black Slough wouldn't be, Drainage Board wouldn't be able to pump into the South Forty Foot at peak periods. I don't believe at any point the South Forty Foot itself was identified as an overtopping risk, and certainly not in Boston. And, yeah, so I think those are the key points that certainly look forward to scrutinising when that comes forward. We have councillor Skinner, then councillor Clark, then councillor Fleetwood.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I will thank the Black Slough Board. They did actually, with collaboration from the EA, do a desulting operation up to Hubbard's Bridge until they got caught up with spiny loaches, I believe. But Yes. So that was quite interesting. But from the figures that the board had at the time, you could see the increase in flow down the South Forty Foot because they'd desulted it. So that was all good. I will confirm Allison's thoughts regarding that block of terrace houses, because my wife's grandparents lived in one of those through the twenties all the way up to the eighties. And at that time, they didn't have a problem with flooding or overtopping, not whatsoever. So hearts go out to those, and thanks for the help they've received so far. Regarding twenty eighteen and the pumping station, the pumping station was actually, interestingly, forty-six, forty-eight, and it was built to protect the farmland, which both the recent two flooding events have actually shown that farmland as flooded. But that's not, whatever the flavour of government since, food resilience doesn't seem to be a problem. In fact, they seemed to want to build PV on it, et cetera. So good luck with eating. But I can also say that there was some, you need to check your flood alerts, because people down London Road receive flood avert alerts in the evening, where maybe the people that live next to it didn't. So I think you need to go back and try again with that one. But I will also tell you, I can remember it quite vividly, because the six was the date of my mother's funeral. So I actually passed over the bridge to go and fetch some mail up from the home. And I can tell you at five o'clock, I was concerned. But I was thinking that people, people would know what the levels were in that drain and do something about it. But at five o'clock, it's a long way from the other six hours on there. It's quite a long, lot of difference between the tide times. I think we need to investigate that thoroughly. And I'll also declare an interest, as the chairman, as a former chief engineer of Avon Barford, I have a love of large diesels as well. And I think the residents would have been very grateful for a heritage working day on the six, and that would have solved that problem. So that's those bits around Boston that I think you need to be looking at. But I was also going to pick up your report. You know my love of water and kayaking. Your love of water seems to map some of mine. You know, Maxi, often do a run from Stamford up to Maxi Cook. Maxi Cook, they're showing very high water levels. Some of these water levels need monitoring and something doing before it gets to that. Low with them, no comment, members over there. Wayne Fleet, I know it'll probably come up later, but when I was chair of this committee, I kept Wayne Fleet on the agenda because I wanted to see something done and finished. We're still getting floods there. So I think our resilience scheme could do better. And that's it. That's all I'm going to comment on. But I was in and around on the six. I saw the water levels. It's not just the water levels there. It's not just the water levels there. If you look at the Maud Foster, which is another one that's controlled by EA, the levels there were quite high. Quite, as a note, my former cub master, Norman Beacon, used to control that, both from the Witham Rivers Trust or whatever it was, to EA, up to when he retired. So I think we need to be monitoring those levels more, be more proactive rather than reactive, and then hopefully people will keep their feet dry.
There's a point in there about the flood alerts and flood warnings, and this is a point more wider as well. After every time we issue a flood warning, we do a validation exercise. So this is to make sure, have we issued the flood warning in a timely way? Is it too early? Is it too late? That all goes back into the knowledge bank, into the procedures. Obviously, there's dangers in issuing too many flood alerts or flood warnings in that people stop to take notice of them if we issue them too much. Obviously, if you issue them too late, people aren't able to take the appropriate action. So it's an important thing that we do post-flooding, after issuing those warnings, is to review them and make sure that we, if there's any sort of improvements that we can make. On the other points about levels more widely, generally, as Peter said within the IDB, if we do know there's a storm coming or a sort of guarantee of a large amount of rainfall, we will endeavour to lower river levels where we can. Again, I think it was probably, you know, the rainfall that was forecast on the fifth and sixth wasn't necessarily forecast to the extent that other storms have been forecast. So some of the watercourses at least weren't levelled to their, you know, they're at their winter level, so they're their lowest level, but in terms of lowering them even further, it's probably presented a challenge. On Wayne Fleet, you know, we haven't forgotten Wayne Fleet, we continue to work hard to improve things for Wayne Fleet, so we're still working through the action plan there. Part of that was around, well, again, we've just about had a model delivered for Wayne Fleet. Through that, we're able to get more evidence, and we're able to also improve the flood warning service there quite considerably, so improve the forecasting arrangements through that. And all that evidence will also build into the resilience scheme, which is in the capital programme there as well, which is looking to improve some of the embankments around Wayne Fleet, provide them more resilience to over-topping. You mentioned there was over-topping at Wayne Fleet. With all those, all our waters, as I mentioned previously, we've got 2,200 kilometres of raised embankments. We're going to see more over-topping of those watercourses going forward. It's going to be happening on a much more regular basis, where we're able to pursue schemes to make embankments more resilient to over-topping. We will certainly do that, but, you know, we won't, certainly won't see less of those occurrences going forward, likely to see more. And, you know, our philosophy for Wayne Fleet is try and make them as resilient as possible to that over-topping.
Thank you, chairman. Just coming back on that, I mentioned to Peter Bateson about the disappearance of freeboard on the bank and whether the banks are working within their design capability. Well, when you've lost that amount of freeboard and design, I would like to say that you're not acting within the bank's design, and that has caused problems throughout the piece this time. And then, one final other point, chairman, I think's really, really important, the importance of all parish councils and town boards having their own emergency plan, and that being effective because throughout this, again, I would say I would cast doubt, because the whole point of emergency planning is to prevent disasters, not tidy up after them. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, chairman. A few years ago, in my division, River Witham, there was a lot of strengthening of the riverbank. Without doubt, I believe that if that weren't done, most of my division would have got flooded lately. But next door to my division is Sinsall Bank, and I read somewhere that the seeping of the walls aren't going to be repaired. Why is that? Because once something happens, it'll just get worse, it ain't going to get no better.
Yeah, thank you councillor Clark. Yeah, so on your first point, certainly the Lincoln flood defence scheme was in full operation over this period. So that involves storage of water upstream of Lincoln, large gates come into operation and fill the storage areas. So that those areas don't get overfill or fill too quickly, we do run the water through Lincoln as high as possible, so that gets the water through, preserves the flood storage areas in case we get further rainfall events in due course. As you say, there's many thousands of properties that helps to protect. Now, we do experience some problems through seepage through Lincoln itself, so you'd notice the Brayford Pool as well, this reports seepage in those locations. We do know about those locations, and they will go on to our list of assets which we will consider, you know, maintenance work in the future. But all that work has to be prioritised alongside other work, and that obviously dependent on the budget that we get for that. But certainly, we do know about those locations, and they are in our system.
Will people's homes be privater over land?
So in the current system, that's the case, yes, you know, that we get more funding for, as people mentioned, more chimney pots are more funding, effectively. That doesn't necessarily mean that all schemes that protect property are done ahead of other schemes, because it depends on the kind of the cost and the benefits of doing so. So it depends on, you know, how the funding can be distributed in terms of sort of day-to-day maintenance and some of the sort of capital maintenance that might be required. Certainly, you know, so we might do some of the short-term day-to-day maintenance whilst applying on some more rural areas, whilst applying for capital funding for urban areas, for example, which might take some years to come through.
Thank you, councillor Fleetwood, and then councillor Ashley Morris.
Thank you, chairman. The pinch point of Lincoln, of course, is Stamp End, and more precisely, the Glory Hole. If you can't get the water through the Glory Hole, it doesn't go anywhere. If you think in terms of the size of the Glory Hole in comparison with the Witham, it is a very close pinch point. Anyway, I wasn't going to talk about that. We've talked about partnership working this morning and how organisations work together. If I rewind you to Saturday morning, I had the residents of Sothary bashing my ears about the state of a bank between the Witham and Witham Third Drainage Board. Along the top of it is a Sustran cycle route going between Lincoln and Boston, but underneath it, there's some nice furry creatures called badgers who are burrowing away quite happily and weakening the banks. And there is very much a concern that the banks will potentially breach at that location. Moving on to breaches of banks, last autumn, the Barlings Banks were put back into place, as we know. The one to the Fiskerton side, however, I believe has been given a very close call again recently, and there's a new penstock in there, which I don't believe worked 100%. And the net result of all this is that Thomas Farms, not my good friends, the Ward's on the other bank, who have thousands of acres underwater, on the opposite bank, Thomas Farms, I believe, had 100 acres of land underwater through over-topping and bits and pieces. So I just wonder quite where we are. And this is all, of course, everyone said, without a warning from anywhere. Whilst it was alluded to, we might get a bit of rain overnight, it wasn't alluded to that you're going to get 12 mils on the Sunday evening and 55 mils going through the evening, which was the case on the Barlings. So any comments on that one? I mean, the issue is that all of those banks around the Barlings area and going back to Fiskerton are still exceedingly weak and are very, very close to going.
Yeah, I mean, thank you councillor, you're right, those embankments throughout that whole area are fragile. As with the South Delft, we talked about earlier, you know, we've monitored sort of piping, that's water going through the embankments, we've monitored areas of over-topping, slips and slumps on the opposite side as well. So, yeah, it's been sort of well documented, we know that there are those issues there. We go back to the, you know, initial issue that we do struggle to find the money for those areas. It would need quite considerable investment to renew those embankments. Obviously, where we have had the breach, we've done the best we can to repair that with the money that was available in those locations. But it does remain a challenge to fund complete replacements of those embankment systems. Throughout that area, in the low Barlings, it does come under something which we're looking at around sustainable recovery. So this is going forward, we recognise that this is a situation that isn't good for the landowners, isn't good for emergency responders, having to constantly deal with these issues every year. So it's something we want to put on a more sustainable keel going forward. So under the auspices of the Fens 2100-plus project, this is a sort of pilot area within that location. So we're looking to see how, moving forward, we can manage the area in a more sustainable way. So this is looking at, you know, if you do get over-topping in that area, what arrangements can we have with landowners, et cetera? Can we use the benefits from other parts of the catchment to improve the resilience of this area as well? So that work is ongoing. We had a meeting with landowners, I think probably in November, I think it was, just for Christmas, so that we can get the scope right for the consultants. So that work is now more or less commencing now to look at those areas. But it is recognised that these areas are a challenge. And I suppose, as a reminder more widely, the Fens 2100-plus work recognises these challenges for lowland areas, the funding challenges, the vast number of assets that are required to keep the landscape dry and to keep day-to-day activity functioning requires an inordinate number of assets which are owned by both ourselves, IDBs and others, just for day-to-day life to function. So the Fens 2100 work is trying to quantify that, to try and understand both the short-term funding requirements and the long-term requirements for this landscape as a whole right across the Fens network.
So I hope that when the Lower Witham Strategy and the Fens 2100 comes together, it will read somewhat differently to the report that's now 35 years old, which reads very closely to the most recent report issued by the EA. Nothing seems to move on particularly, there does need to be some positive way forwards, because one report comes after another and they become either desktop or paper exercises, and there isn't a product coming out of it, there isn't an outcome. And that's what needs to be done, there needs to be construction, fewer people at desks with pens, more people with shovels, doing some effective drainage work.
I think councillor Fleetwood has made, not much more I can add to that.
Thank you. Councillor Ashley Morris, please.
Thank you. Couple of points. We've heard the word challenge over and over again, and it's about time we rise, or whoever needs to, rises to the challenge in whatever way we possibly can, because this is really affecting things. Another minor comment, which we do, I mean, I'm a massive fan of badgers and newts, but it does seem rather odd that the Environment Agency is sort of poacher and gamekeeper in one body, because I'd hate to think that consideration to wildlife, which can very well be dealt with by Natural England, is even a consideration when people have got sewage and water flooding around their houses. Now, the only other point I need to make, and I say I really would like to stress this challenge, the South Forty Foot levels, were they lowered on the night of the flood in Boston? Were they successfully lowered? Was it a wrong decision, or were they lowered as much as was possible? Because it seems that would have impacted on the amount of water that we were all amazed to see lashing round Black Slough Pumping Station. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have to come back to you on the details of whether the waters were, I mean, we're covering a vast area here, and to know the detail of every site is a challenge for these meetings. But I will endeavour to come back, I will commit to come back to you on the detail of the interactions at that location at the time. With regards to, you mentioned badgers and wildlife, we do have to follow the law, we can't ask our staff to break the law. So, but however, our intention is to put people and property first. We will work within the confines of the law, we try and overcome those challenges, as you say. And, you know, I know our ops managers are very keen to try and resolve these problems as soon as possible, but we do have to work within the law.
Thank you very much. It does seem, there seems to be a wee bit of a time when the law is perhaps a bit of an ass, because perhaps that's something that needs even at a higher level than us to be looked at, and perhaps if they were separate bodies, those sort of conflicts wouldn't ever occur, and all the finance that your body had was towards watercourses and getting them dredged, cleaned and operational, recommissioning pumps, that kind of thing. And, you know, we could leave the lovely wildlife to another body. That certainly seems to me to be a possible solution. Okay, thank you very much.
I would be careful what you wish for, and just a little bit of defence here of the agency, the Environment Agency, insofar as there is another organisation out there that has policing powers on this stuff, and that's Natural England. And unfortunately, they have absolutely no obligation whatsoever to care about livelihood, farmland, domestic property. They do take a somewhat more fundamentalist view, and I would be nervous about going too far down that route of giving them any greater powers in this. And I think at some point, and that's why I asked the question I did earlier about finding out what has been asked for and what has been granted, because actually, if we as a committee feel we need to ask some of these questions of Natural England, then it's only fair that we pose those questions at Natural England, who are often the decision-maker rather than the Environment Agency, who are trying to juggle the responsibilities.
Councillor Middleton and then councillor Skinner, please.
Just to come back to your thing on levels of the Witham on that evening, I think the high tide was about 11, 12, 1 o'clock of that time. So they wouldn't have been slushing at that time. And this is an absolute pinpoint critical aspect of when those pumps would have run. They would have run when the sluice was shut, and they would have attempted to hold the water level further lower and stop that over-topping. So it just happened at a time that was the high tide, and they weren't getting rid of any water at all.
And I think it's also worth appreciating how those pumps would operate. They wouldn't just operate for the period of the high tide. They would actually, their efficiency drops off at high tide, but they would run continuous, and you're absolutely right, they would keep working even at a lower rate while the high tide. But equally, at a low tide, in addition to the navigation lock and the sluice, you'd have effectively an extra two outfalls that were operating at low tide, just to get ahead and keep ahead and keep going through that tide. I think we've given, I have one question. No, I haven't, I've got Paul Skinner.
Thank you very much. Nobody's asked this one, chairman, and I think it'd be very remiss if it wasn't asked. It's regarding to the capital reconditioning programme. 55% on the pie chart are deferred. I hope that's none of our bank projects. Page 62.
I'll have to come back to you councillor on that one, exactly which projects they are.
Thank you. One final question from me, just picking up on the question that Wellingdon Deeping Board posed on page 43, appendix A of their contribution. What is the status of the Environment Agency pumping station on the Borneo? And is it working, is it not working, when will it be working? What are the issues around that asset, please?
Again councillor, I'll endeavour to come back to you outside the meeting with that one.
Thank you. Again, fully appreciate that these are sometimes very specific questions about very specific assets, and will be grateful to hear those answers when they come. Genuinely, Morgan, thank you for answering the questions that committee have put to you today. Fully appreciate that you are but one representative of an organisation and your time with us is appreciated and your answers we are grateful for. I think it's fairly clear, and I'm sure you can, you'll report back to your colleagues the strength of feeling of the committee on many of these things, and I would just reinforce, anyone that is concerned for the good reputation of the Environment Agency who want to see that organisation thrive in the work that it does keeping people in Lincolnshire safe, it is going to be absolutely imperative that that work around what happened on the South Forty Foot is brought forward very quickly. And I hope mine will focus very carefully on the reputational challenge of justifying decommissioning a 60 cubic capacity pumping station on a drain that has just flooded 35 properties half a mile from it. With that in mind, again, thank you, and we will move on with the agenda. I have a request and with just swapping around items eight and nine, conscious that we have got people that have come to speak to us representing local communities, and they have sat here for very nearly three hours. So I would, with your indulgence, I would like to grant that request that we move, we have item nine first before item eight, take the flood and water team update before the angler water update, but I am in your hands, I'm happy to move that if it's seconded and look for a show of hand, seconded councillor Ashley Morris. Is that agreed? Are we agreed? Agreed, thank you. So we will take the flood and water team update first, so I'll hand over to Matthew and then we'll bring in our external speakers after that, please. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, chairman. With your approval and just mindful we have guests in the room, I am happy to take the Grefford questions first, just mindful that within my report there are some things that I'd like to run through with committee members that may just take a few minutes, so if it's agreeable then we deal with that first, I'm more than happy to do that with your approval.
That is fine, we'll take Grefford first, then we've got a question from Tallington, but yes, by all means, I will, if you'd like to ask your question, please.
I will do, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity for us to be here today and to speak, and no worry that we've sat through three hours of very interesting debate. Not only am I thankful to be here to ask a few questions, but also hopefully we demonstrate by our presence here how important the issues of the floods that have taken place in Grefford are, and how determined and focused we are to get actions taken to prevent issues like this arising in the future. My first question is quite broad, there has been a Section 19 report that's been prepared following the extensive flood in Grefford in January 2024. Just to put it in perspective for those people who are not familiar with that, it's pretty well documented, we gathered a lot of information around what happened at the time, and circa 40-plus properties were affected. When I have spoken to my neighbours and gather the sort of typical insurance costs, the costs of the damage to the property is somewhere in the 10 to 15 million pounds range, just to put it in perspective. And that's also, not only has it damaged a lot of properties, it's also caused a lot of disruption to lives of many of my neighbours, many of whom are in their 70s and 80s, and you can imagine how disruptive and frail that is, particularly as some of them have been flooded again. You know, earlier this month the village was flooded again and properties, some properties people haven't actually moved back into, and some where they'd moved into a few weeks ago, they've now had to vacate the properties again. Just to put it in perspective, I've lived in Grefford for 30 years and have experienced five floods, twice in the last two years, both of which have been much worse than in earlier years. It's worth noting that the main street of Grefford hasn't flooded for the last 70 years when the Grefford Cut was produced in 1957, however, it has flooded twice in the last two years, causing extensive damage. So what we would like to understand from Lincolnshire County Council as the lead local flood authority, but in particular many of the questions also focus on the EEA, what resources are going to be applied to implement the recommendations of the Section 19 report, many of them are quite substantial, and we'd like to understand what is going to be done to implement those recommendations. And if resources are not going to be allocated, we'd like to understand on what basis they are not being allocated. I have a second question, but maybe pause at the end of that first question.
Yeah, thank you for that, happy to take that question. So, I think just for a brief bit of context to give an answer to that question, so in our role as lead local flood authority at Lincolnshire County Council, we have a duty to undertake a Section 19 investigation when being made aware of a flood, and we have a duty to identify the causation of the flooding and identify which risk management authorities may have responsibility or functions in respect of managing the water. That is where the act stops, there is nothing beyond that. However, in Lincolnshire, what we have done in the interests of transparency, of working in partnership collaboratively across all the organisations, is locally taken that a step further by making recommendations following the Section 19 report. What that doesn't do though, in our lead local flood authority role, is give us any powers or legal powers to compel people to undertake those recommendations, it's about collaboratively working in partnership and looking at resolving those local issues for the benefit of the communities that have been affected. So I just wanted to make that clear, that's our stance, sometimes I think the lead local flood authority role probably makes it sound a bit grander than what it is in the sense of what is actually available to us. So that's just a brief bit of context. Going back to the original Section 19 report from last year, recognise the devastation that it caused in Grefford as it did in, I have to say, many locations across the county. I visited the village last year myself and spoke to many residents, I did members of my team, and of course sorry to hear that people have been affected again this year, and as we heard from councillor Davies' update, you know, all the locations have been as well unfortunately, it's absolutely devastating. Looking at the recommendations that were made from the report last year, there's a number for different organisations in there, so there were some recommendations for the Environment Agency to consider, and there are some recommendations for Lincolnshire County Council working collaboratively with others to consider, and things like riparian ownership comes into that as well, and there were also some recommendations for the Grefford Flood Action Group and Parish Council that can assist in that. So I think what that highlights is that working collaboratively together will bring the greatest benefits to the area and the village, and that's fully recognised. What wasn't highlighted in the report last year but has been highlighted following the flooding that has just occurred in early January is some potential implications with the highways surface water network. So that wasn't highlighted last year, we went on the evidence that we were provided with and I think has been pointed out, because of the timing of the flooding, it probably wasn't appreciated just because it largely happened at night, happening at daytime this time it was easier for people to see some of what the impacts were. So we have a commitment at the moment through my team, working with our colleagues in the highways department, to look at a full CCTV investigation, jetting investigation, to understand the surface water system that flows in the village, particularly down the main street, as we are aware that that then outfalls into land drains that will also have a bearing on how that possibly functions. So that's where the combination of working together comes in, because we need those open ditches and drains in functioning in order to be able to deal with the water, and we think that that will help mitigate a lot of the issues that has been seen along the main street and things like that by getting the water away quicker. So we've got a commitment to do that piece of work from Lincolnshire County Council's point of view. There will be other things that lie with our partner organisations as well to do, and I know there's been communication with the Environment Agency as well, and also working with the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum through Lincolnshire County Council about emergency plans and preparedness in the village. What I would say however, from seeing some of the documentation that has been presented from the Flood Action Group, Grefford has to be absolutely commended in the approach that it's taking in trying to take these actions forward in a collaborative way and engaging proactively with the different organisations that we've talked about. And also that recognition from the Flood Action Group that whilst there are organisations represented in this room here today, there are also actions that members of the community can take, and also there are all actions that the local landowners through riparian responsibilities and watercourses can take as well. So that is, you know, should be commended, that we, that approach to drive forward and work collaboratively with that. I will pause there because I am mindful that not all of the actions from the original report do fall to Lincolnshire County Council, but for those that do, you have our commitment that we are working towards looking at supporting and mitigating what we can in the best way possible.
Appreciate that. The, obviously there are a lot of actions that also reside with the Flood Action Groups and we're pretty active in getting those things done. The one sort of major item on the recommendations was Point 6.3 in the Section 19 report, which was about a catchment area to prevent water from hitting Grefford. Whilst you're correct in terms of clearing the drains helps get the water away, my property is in the front line of when the water hits Grefford, and those drains are after my property, so it does absolutely nothing to help me. The water will, the problem is the sheer volume of water that is coming towards Grefford that is overwhelming the cut, and is overwhelming anything that's then subsequently downstream of the village. The village, the way the water systems work in the village, and I spent a lot of time studying this, I mean whilst there's a lot of ways in which water can get to Grefford, there's only three ways it can get out. So actually part of the problem is actually trying to slow the rate at which water actually gets to the village, and that requires some substantive work, which I recognise is outside of the LCC, but is in the EEA's responsibility to look at schemes which have been proposed in the past to capture water to slow it coming into Grefford, because if that's not done, we're just going to be back here again and again and again. And I do emphasise the fact, the damage caused in January last year was somewhere in the region of 10 to 15 million pounds to people's properties, it's a lot of money. So if there's a cost justification that needs to be done here, that's the sum of money that we're talking about, not the £40,000 per property that is typically used, it's nearer £350,000 to £500,000 is the scale of the damage that has been done per property.
Yes, if I just briefly add if I may, that some members of my team have been talking to the local Environment Agency team as well for the area about doing some broader modelling work. So I talked about the surface water network that we're looking at doing and the commitment to that, but this goes beyond that, this is a broader modelling work, largely influenced, I have to say, probably by Environment Agency colleagues, but we are very much engaged in that process and talking to them, and that's where we will come together to look at what options might be, what might be available there. So that's early days, I have to say, on that particular piece of work, but again, there is a commitment of us working together on that to look at that. But I don't know whether Morgan may wish to add anything from a Environment Agency point of view?
Yeah, thank you, Matthew. I've spoken to my equivalent in the Wellingdon Incatchment, Ben Thornley, I'm sure you've come across Ben, so he sort of gave that commitment to look through and update previous studies that have been undertaken in the catchment, because they need to bring it up in sort of days' numbers, so we sort of know the quantum of the ask, if you like. You mentioned sort of upstream storage, it's a potential sort of solution to that. Obviously, any funding bid that we put forward has to follow the government rules around that funding bid, we need to put together that, because we don't hold the money locally for schemes like this, you know, everything we have to sort of apply as the risk management authorities have to for the funds, and we have to present that kind of business case based on the current rules. So, yeah, we will work with the Flood Action Group to look at those more expansive options, as well as I think our teams, whereas the ops manager's been on site recently and maybe identified some of the sort of short-term measures and hopefully have implemented some of those.
Yes, if you know the residents of Grefford, we can, we're more than well equipped to help you with business cases, so if that's necessary then we're ready to help. I mean, Ben's been talking about some of this stuff for a while, and to the point being made down here, we need some action, less talk and more action.
The current system, you may not be aware, for funding these schemes, it's called Partnership Funding System, and if you put them into a search engine, you know, you can actually find the spreadsheets that we would have to fill in. So I'd encourage you, you know, if you're that way inclined to have a go for yourself at, you know, at those spreadsheets and you can see the, you know, the size of the task, you know.
But they're based on £40,000 a property.
Yes, yeah.
Which is nonsense.
Probably more 30, I would say.
38, I think it is, is the real number, but I mean, that's nowhere near reflecting reality, and there's no, there's no hope in hell, the justification we've made on that basis, because it doesn't reflect reality.
So what I would say to that is that, as I mentioned earlier, the government announced that the Ada Conference in November, that they're going to review the way funding is allocated to sort of our capital schemes, and there's going to be a consultation out shortly, so I would encourage people to feed into that consultation. And that's to, the current programme of capital works ceases in March 2026, and this is leading up to a new programme of works which will hopefully commence in April 2026 with a different sort of funding formula.
Okay. I've got a second question, which is much simpler, before I hand over to my friendly neighbour here. A number of my neighbours have applied for funds through the flood resilience funds, and I guess, I know the answer to this question from earlier in the meeting, but it appears that the money's run out and they're not being allocated, they can't get funding for work to make their homes more resilient. Is that the case, and if it has run out, when is it likely to be reallocated?
So on that to bring some clarity, it isn't the fact that the money has run out, the money is there and we are still working through the property resilience process from the government grants that were announced following Storm Babette and Storm Henk. So that is ongoing, that hasn't stopped. With regards to properties in Grefford, they are on our batch four and five list, I believe all have had their survey visits done now for those people who contacted us to wish to apply for the grant. That's been undertaken by our survey contractor, RAB, R-A-B. We are now contracting a new, excuse me, installation contractor, with those works for installations to the property expected to start in February, from February, and that's the batch that the properties of, that Grefford are in. The challenge that we've had is that, so government announced the grant, availability of the grants following Storm Babette and Henk, because it met the national... the grants following Storm Babette and Henk, because it met the national guidance, so it wasn't just Lincolnshire, it was a number of neighbouring authorities as well that was eligible for, to apply for these grants. We have, we as Lincolnshire County Council are administering that grant on behalf of DEFRA, and we have to comply with the DEFRA rules to do that. But the challenge has been that the property flood resilience industry, the way the framework is structured, the people that do the surveys and the people that do the installation, has been very limited as to choice of who is available to do that. We've been quite lucky in Lincolnshire actually, because we were already working with one of the property flood resilience contractors that were on the approved list. So we've actually been slightly ahead of the game in Lincolnshire compared to some neighbouring authorities, albeit it has still taken a little time to work through this just because of the number of applications that we've been dealing with. But that process hasn't stopped, so all of those people who applied in Grefford will, assuming they wish to follow that through with the grants process, will get the installations done. What hasn't happened following the January floods is that government haven't announced that the resilience recovery framework will be enacted this time around. So there isn't the opportunity for new applications to be made for those people affected in January.
So, so some of my neighbours definitely have been told that there is no money available. So who should they contact if that is, if they're being told that? I'll go back and validate it with them, but.
Yes, that, that doesn't tally with my thinking, but come back to myself through, through the floods and water team, and we, I have a couple of members of staff that are leading on this, this grant for, we're administering that, we're more than happy to clarify that. I, I don't believe that's correct, so.
Okay.
We will, we will bring clarity to that, more than happy to do so, but I'd like to confirm here that anybody who has applied and is on our records in Grefford for an application will be progressing to installation.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Hi everyone, thanks for this morning, and thanks for letting us speak, Chair, thank you. I'm Richard McDermott, I was flooded in January twenty twenty four badly, had to, had to leave my house for, for seven months. I was lucky, it was only seven months, as we said, some, some poor people were flooded and they're still not back in the property from the first time and have been reflooded. So it's a really dreadful situation, as I'm sure you can imagine for, for all those involved, the level of financial, physical and mental stress when you're flooded is, is, you know, really, really high, really high. So we have had, since, since the January floods this year, we have had a lot of work from the agencies on the ground, from the EA, from the, from the council, and huge amount of support from our county and district councils as well. So I'd just like to put on record, huge thanks to all of those for that, it's really important and it is really highly valued. However, as things stand, based on the evidence provided by, by EA, by Ben and Henry, because of the groundwater levels in our area, we are now liable to flood again. Next time we get any significant rainfall, we've still got exceptionally high groundwater levels. The catchment area, as we know, our catchment area in Grefford runs all the way up to sort of Corby going up, almost up to Grantham, and it was that amount of water into the system there that was really hitting Grefford. There is no ability to control the flow until it gets to Grefford, which is why we get these huge surges coming through the village, which we've never had before to the level we are now. So residents are now petrified every time heavy rains forecast, you can imagine, so this stress doesn't go away. And thankfully, we've not experienced any loss of life in Grefford, but we were awake this time, it happened about nine thirty, and the, the level of water that comes very, very quickly, it's, it's really, really, really high levels that come down the village quite quickly, so we cannot, cannot guarantee there won't be a loss of life in the future, and we don't want to be sat in this committee meeting discussing that in the future, I would suggest. So we need urgent action and we need it now, okay? Cut that was put in seventy years ago, whilst it still helps, it's clearly not fit for purpose now, we've got a river running down Main Street in the village which is causing a huge amount of damage. So we need your help, we need that scheme investigating. We're not going to go away, we can't afford to go away, we won't give up, and we can't afford to put that scheme into the too difficult to fund bucket, yeah, I'm afraid. We need to look at how we can fund it, and we, you know, I'm sure I can speak for many people in the village who put our own hands in our pockets to support it and put some match funding in place if we can, and if we need to, okay? We absolutely must reduce floodwater levels entering the village. Having said that, thank you, Matt, to your team who came with Highways on Friday and have already started to investigate that work. It would be great to get a commitment, I think the guys mentioned two or three weeks for that work to be done, given we could flood next time, we have twenty five milli, is what I've been told, of water, that's not a lot, that's a normal winter amount of rainfall in twenty four hours on some occasions. We've got a heavy rain forecast at the end of the month, please can we get that expedited in that two to three week period, please? And can we also have a commitment that if that CCTV finds that there's significant damage in that highways drainage system, that any works to repair that is expedited very, very quickly as well, i.e. in the spring, we're not waiting a year for that to happen again? And then also, can we have the commitment that the annual maintenance that's meant to happen, it's on the County Council's website, that those drains are cleared, can we make sure that happens on an annual basis around the, the late autumn and start of the winter? So that's the first question. I think you've probably, probably able to answer that quite, quite easily, Matt, so hopefully that's the case. My second question is probably a bit more complex, because flooding is complex. We've experienced the situation in Grefford, and we have multiple flooding issues, obviously it's all to do with the rainfall in the catchment area and that surge, but your part of Grefford floods for a very different reason to my part of Grefford, which is Main Street, and there are other issues as well. So it's a complex situation, and with multiple solutions that we require. There is no silver bullet solution, and we need to work with the multiple agencies and with landowners, okay? So the second question is, can agencies, the agencies present, commit to work with us and have almost a location centric multi-agency approach to Grefford and to other areas that have been flooded multiple times? Some of you will be aware of a MASH, a multi-agency safeguarding hub, which is used to support, to make sure all of the agencies are coordinated around a child that's at risk. It feels like we ought to have a similar approach to something like, to villages that flood multiple times, so all the agencies are joined up, so we're not having a meeting with the EAA, and then a week later, a meeting with LCC, and then a meeting with, we need to be round the table together with our local landowners, working through these issues and coming up with a shared plan that we all agree with, and with all the agencies committed to doing their bit. So could we have a multi-agency approach for Grefford? We're very happy to be a pilot. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. So regarding the, the maintenance regime, you know, I'll give you an answer here from Lincolnshire County Council, but there's my team, the floods and water team, and our Highways colleagues, and as I explained before, we work very closely together, so we'll, make sure those, those things are coordinated. We have spoken before, and we know that, you know, we're doing all we can with regards to the, the broader CCTV work and the wider work to get that done. Absolutely recognise everything that has, has gone on in Grefford and how that has affected people. Please don't think, you know, not taking anything away from that, however, I cover the, through my team and others, we cover the whole of Lincolnshire, and there are other communities who have also unfortunately been badly affected a second time in the space of a year. So we have a difficult balancing act to, to make, as do other authorities, I think it's, it's, it's fair to say. So please, don't think that's me taking anything away from what has happened there, but just to give some context from our point of view, we have to balance that with other locations that we're looking at as well, so we can deliver as much as we can for everybody who has been affected. Having said that, as you know, Grefford was already on our list of programmed work that we were looking at doing, and we're hoping to get something in in the next two to three weeks, as you've said. We will continue that discussion, because some things only have come out of the site visit meeting on Friday, so we will, we will update you directly on that to, to keep you informed. Yeah.
Just on that, I'd have to say the team that came out and met with me and another colleague on Friday were superb, lifted every single manhole cover, spent three hours with us, they were superb, so we just, we just need it to happen now.
Yeah. No, understood, thank you. Regarding the multi-agency approach, conscious I may be speaking on behalf of other authorities here as well, but certainly from Lincolnshire County Council's point of view, happy to have that discussion, it's quite clear you're very proactive and engaged in Grefford, there's a lot of local knowledge there that will feed into, you know, what we need to know about, and, and things that you can help us take forward as well with landowner engagement, all of those other things that, that come along with this. So very much that collaborative approach, we, we could have a conversation and, you know, talk amongst the organisations present and see how we could probably best take that forward, but happy to support that from my point of view, certainly.
Thank you. I've just brought in, I think Peter Bateson wanted to come in on this, and councillor Ashley Morris as well, you know, okay. Councillor Ashley Morris, I think you had a question on this as well.
Yes, very simply, we visited in our capacity on the flood impact Grefford, and were horrified, really, to see the amount of, the amount of damage, and massive congratulations to everyone that's got it together in the village, to do something. My, it's a very simple question, we went and looked at Grefford Cut, which you couldn't recognise when you looked over the bridge, because it just looked like a field. It was totally overgrown. We've had a subsequent meeting with a lady from the Environment Agency, to my knowledge, who offered a possibility of, of actually desilting and de-weeding a third of it, which seemed amazing. Has that actually been done, and has the rest of it been done? Thank you.
Yeah, I might, might bow to more local knowledge on, on that.
Well, the third, the third's been done, but then it's not, not been built.
The issue we've got, or we believe we've got, this is again, based on the, what appears to have happened on the night, is the, the cut does its job to a degree, the cut was built seventy years ago and.
You just can't cope with.
Coat with the level of water, but the level gets to a certain point where the river decides to just take it, the, the banks are need, you know, there needs to be a better solution, the cut needs to be deeper and wider, or there needs to be other works to slow it down before it gets to Grefford, because it keeps going through the cut, you know, really high levels, can't really take any more is my understanding, but then it just starts to pour through the village at a much higher level. So the cut's not, whilst it's doing a job in the sense that it's keeping some water out of the village, it's not fit for purpose as a fully functional flood prevention that saves the village, it's certainly clearly not doing that.
Morgan, will you?
I, I was, I was just going to sort of comment on the partnership arrangements, and, you know, we've seen working across the county and many other locations, that working in partnership really does have the best outcomes for, for, for communities. And when, when you get much more powerful, you know, bids, you get much more powerful sort of combined working. And as you say, you know, it is very often flooding comes from multiple different, different sources, you know, and it's very difficult and sometimes to say, well, that's Environment Agency's water, that's IDB's water, that's, you know, who else's water, you know, so working in partnership really does help to sort of amplify those, those bids and that, that, those working arrangements.
I mean, I mentioned a pilot, I genuinely think we've got the opportunity to do something quite meaningful for others to learn from, if we, if we continue to advance our thinking on this and work with you collaboratively, perhaps we can do something that can then be, be used as a model going forward to support how we deal with what is a complex issue for, for us, but maybe for other, other villages as well. So it'd be worth pursuing.
Thank you very much, and genuinely, I think what you're achieving in, in Grefford with, with that partnership and that community involvement is, is tremendous, and a credit to you. And hopefully, working across partnerships, we'll all get to a solution which, which protects that community, and I think it does speak to that, you were referring to the Grefford Cut at an earlier age, where flooding wasn't tolerated, it must never be tolerated, we must never allow ourselves to get into this position thinking, well, we can't stop flooding, we should at least really try, which is what our predecessors did when they dug the, the , the cut and, and, and put those, and put those measures in. So if they did it back then, I'm, I'm every confident that it should be achievable today. I also, so thank you genuinely, genuinely for that. I'll now move on, we've got Mr Otley, from Tallington, who has a question to ask, so I'll invite you, as I have done with our friend from Grefford, to ask your question, please.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And I'd like to pass my condolences to Grefford, they're only the next village away, and they flooded on the same day, well done to what you're doing. I just wish I could have done more for my village. I was the Tallington River Warden from two thousand and six, till a few days after the twenty twenty four flood. I suffered mentally, I came here and I spoke to Mark Garthwaite from the Resolution, Resilience Forum, and he told me I wasn't King Canute, that I was to write everything down and put a report into Lincolnshire County Council. I did, I sent it to Matthew. He promised that if there was anything in there that they could act on immediately that would solve problems ongoing, he would deal with it. He repeated that a few days, on fourteenth of October at your, at this meeting. He hasn't. Tallington is unique. Tallington is on a hill, side of a hill, Cock Hill. The water came in from one side, normally it goes down into the substrate, the gravel, and it comes back up in Tallington Lakes. It couldn't. My question is quite simply, having, had to choose my words, because I've read your full reports on riparian ownership. While understanding the complexities of dealing with riparian owners, as Matthew asked, your legal officers, what is the situation when someone diverts surface water by filling in the local village pond? Water could never get in through, from one side of the village to the other after July twenty twenty, because it had been filled in. When the flood hit in Christmas twenty twenty, the water came over the top and flooded half the village. When the water came, ten days of surface water came down Cock Hill on January the third, it couldn't get through the substrate, it went over the top, straight through twenty five, or certainly twenty four houses. They are the ones that have been affected by this, it was totally manmade. When the Section nineteen report was produced, it carefully says, it is deemed likely that this happened, doesn't say what I said, I gave a full report, the report is still there. The proposed actions and works, lots of work and lots of spending money and lots of work for the Environment Agency, lots of work for the Anglia Water, sorting out the problems at the bottom end of the village, nothing to stop the water coming in at the top end of the village, just as has been said there. We have, since sixteen ninety, a solution to the problem. It's called a flap valve in the side of the river. But the Environment Agency doesn't know how it works. They say they've got to put a new one in and spend hundreds of thousands of pounds. No, they lift it up, clean it out and shoot it again. I've been here eighteen years dealing with this, if I don't know, and I live a hundred metres away from it, if I don't know what the problem is, what is the problem? Quite simply, I'm the big mouth in the village, I'm hated by everyone because I know everything, because I was a parish councillor. So I am blacked from every multi-agency meeting, I'm blacked by the parish council, I'm blacked by, even Matthew doesn't return my calls now, so it is difficult to try and get you to understand, Tallington needs a different solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question, I appreciate, this is quite an emotive subject. Matthew?
Yes, thank you for that, and first of all, so a few things to, just to clarify there, but first things, my apologies, I haven't had a chance to get back to you, I'm very much mindful that I do need to speak with you, Mr Otter. I'm afraid with being involved with the County Emergency Centre and helping to lead on the recovery process following the floods, I am very much behind with correspondence and communication, still working through that at the moment, because my time has been distracted elsewhere, but I am very much mindful I have a, a, a call to catch up with you at some point, and we have spoken in the past, as you say, and I've, I've got, we have your correspondence on file. Across Tallington, there's a, there's a number of different issues that have been identified following the Section nineteen investigation, we have your report, your report on file. The reports are not there to, to, to lay blame, so you will often find that a lot of the language is about recommendations or consideration and things like that, and that is what then comes out of, out of those recommendations. You do allude to the fact that, oh sorry, you, you mentioned the fact that a multi-agency group has been set up to look at the flooding issues and flooding challenges in Tallington. I'm not aware of circumstances surrounding you personally, why you may or may not be on that group, but there is representation, obviously through the parish council and others, as well as Lincolnshire County Council, Anglia Water and other people, so there is a very much a proactive group looking at Tallington at the moment through that multi-agency group setup, and, and has been for, for some months. Those recommendations haven't been completed yet, it is still work in progress, there, there have been some successes and some things achieved as part of that, but by all means we, we still haven't gone through everything yet collectively, because organisation. we still haven't gone through everything yet collectively as organisations, not just one organisation, but collectively. And that's sort of where we are at the moment. But yes, absolutely, I will make the time to catch up with you as soon as I possibly can. And I can confirm, we have all your information on file. That's all held with my team in the Floods and Water team. I just...
I just couldn't see anything in the Section 19 report referring to it.
No, I will double check that because it was certainly, all the information we had was not just for this report, but any investigation report was held on file and taken into account. So I will certainly take that away and double check for you. On this, I don't know whether, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but just looking to my colleague from Angling Water in front of me, if there was perhaps more up-to-date information on Tallington with where we are, if that's okay?
I was going to cover this in my update, but I'll briefly cover it now. I was going to actually call Tallington a bit of a success story. In councillor Ashley Morris highlighted a word challenge earlier. Tallington has been a challenge for us for nigh on 2020 years, as councillor Baxter is so very much aware. But through our multi-agency group and the two members here from Gretford has alluded to, that has enabled a different style of working. And through that, we've been able to now fully engage Network Rail, Angling Water's mobilised, Network Rail's mobilised, you know, the riparian owners have mobilised. And we've seen more work in Tallington over the last six months, courtesy of that different approach to working than we probably have in honesty in 20 years. Now, that's due to the testament of the elected members from Tallington and also the parish councils who have worked really, really hard to try and achieve that. But the main focus of that meeting focuses on the surface water issue in Tallington, which I appreciate is one half of the problem. The issue that Mr Otter is referring to in regards to the kind of direction of the water and the kind of river infrastructure, which, you know, the multi-agency group hasn't focused heavily on that because it's not seen as one of the, it's not seen as a main contributing factor to the flooding. One of the main contributing factors is groundwater and how surface water gets away from a village underneath the East Coast Main Line and out towards West Deeping. What I would also say though, Matt, if I can, is that one of concerns at the last multi-agency group meeting for both Angling Water and the Environment Agency is that indeed Mr Otter's comments or report doesn't seem to have been taken into account as part of the Section 19. And it was raised with the county council at the last multi-agency group meeting. So, Mr Otter, please rest assured that the comments have been taken into account and the ask from the multi-agency group was for an independent review of the reports supplied to see what the opinion of the experts was on that information. So it has been taken into account and the concerns were raised at the last multi-agency group meeting. It doesn't seem, based on reading the report, that that information has been taken into account. But if it hasn't, it's just not being acknowledged, then I apologise for making that statement. But it doesn't seem based on report has been taken into account.
And just to follow up on that, I'll just give the assurance, I will take that away and we will certainly check that information.
Thank you, Chair, for the response from both. It's just a pity that, yeah, my information went in in February and nothing has been acted upon and the village is still at risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you, Morgan, go for it.
I've just sent a message to our ops manager about the Penn stock. He said when the, he got back to me, when the river level drops, we will be fixing it. Contract are lined up and waiting to go. So hopefully that's positive news.
Thank you very much for that. That's appreciated and thank you, Mr Otter, for your question. I think we'll crack on with Matthew's report. And I know we've got councillor Gray going to pick up on Horn Castle, but if we can crack on with the, councillor Clark, I understand you'd like to... I'll put you first on my list. Go for it, Matthew.
Thank you, Chairman. So I suppose just a note before I start that the report was written prior to or just before the flooding that happened in early January. So within the report, there isn't a detail of the impacts of that, but obviously councillor Davy has given you the latest position as part of his executive councillor update. So the report, which I will take as read if that is okay, focuses on two or three areas. Firstly, as usual, an update on the status of the Section 19 investigations. Please bear in mind, this, as I say, was just written before the January floods occurred. And thankfully, we are at the time and certainly now are pretty much at the end of having completed all of the Storm Henk and Babette Section 19 investigations, which, as you'll know, is by far, in a way, the most we've ever had to deal with following events. Obviously, the focus is, as rightly been said in committee today, on the recommendations and how we can take those forward. We have taken some learning from previous discussions with the Section 19 investigations. As members of the committee are aware, you are able to look on our Power BI system. There was a map that highlighted the reports and the causation and recommendations of those reports. The feedback was from a number of different sources that it wasn't the easiest to navigate and look at and find that information. So that has been refined. And I may just look at Jess now, if I may, because we were just going to show you the amendments that we've made to make this a lot simpler, hopefully. But we still welcome feedback. This is still open to change, subject to feedback that we receive. But hopefully to make this a lot more streamlined, to get to the main cause of the issues that you wish to see. So this is the Lynx County Council webpage on the flood investigations. And then there's the yellow box there to view the completed investigations. On the old version, this is where it would load up a map and you had to try and navigate around to find the investigation relevant to your area. Now, this has just been streamlined to a simple search box on the left-hand side where you can search, as you can see via parish or years along that box there. What I would just say at the moment is, because this is being updated, it's the Storm Babette and Henk investigations that are currently available to view. Those, prior to that, will be back on there and that's something that we're working through at the moment. If anybody requires any information from any investigations prior to Storm Babette, then please contact us directly at Floods and Water team and we'll be happy to help you with that. But just for now, we are, just got the Babette and Henk investigations on there. Jess, if under parish, you could search for, let's say, Gretford, as it's topical. And I'll just show you the, how that will look. So you go to the drop-down box, choose the parish of interest, and then you can click on any of those there, Jess, thank you. And then if you scroll down, all in one page, rather than different tabs and columns, you have the causation that's been identified and the recommendations. And then below that is what risk management authorities are involved and actions that are being taken forward. So hopefully this keeps it quite compact and succinct that you can see the key pieces of information from what you may need to know from the Section 19 investigation process. Obviously, the original reports are still held with ourselves at the Floods and Water team, but hopefully this has streamlined things and makes it a little bit easier for people to find out the key information. So that was just a quick version of that, but we're still welcome to take comment on that. And happy to adjust and amend to make it as practical to use as possible. One of the other things that has been jointly worked on with organisations is Fix My Street. So if we just think back to Storm Babette and Storm Henk and some of the feedback that we received in the debrief after that, Fix My Street was a key point of information for people to report. And as we know, it was a challenge to work through the huge amount of data that was in there and filter out the information that we needed in respect of the flooding that had happened, those who were impacted, whether it was internal, external, et cetera. So what has happened is we've got together jointly with a few of us through the Lynx Resilience Forum and Highways colleagues, and we have Highways colleagues in the room today. We have Georgina with us today, who is going to go through just a brief demonstration of the new version of Fix My Street, where what we've done is filtered out Highways reporting information to specific flood-related information linked to property and such like. So that's twofold. One, in that hopefully it makes it easy for people to see what they are reporting against and it guides them to the right area so they get the most appropriate and quickest response that they need. But equally, for internal departments here in LCC and other organisations, it filters out that information so we can look at the statistics in the sense of properties affected, locations and so on and so forth, much quicker and easier to streamline that process. Would you like to keep talking? No, you're sorted. So if I can, I'll probably hand over to Georgina and she can just give you a quick example of what the new Fix My Street page looks like. And please be correct if I'm wrong, but I think this was up and running for the January event, so has now been used in anger.
Hello. So firstly, just to note that on this starting screen, I'm using our staging site. The only reason I'm doing that is because at the moment, we're not in a live incident and I wanted to show you one of the improvements that we've made, which was to display prominently an emergency message on the site. So the emergency message is there in, backed in red. We've moved it up to the top of the page, so it's the first thing people will see when they access the site. And the key messaging in that is to let people know that we are responding to a flooding incident or another type of incident without the case. And some key information as to what actions they may need to take if, so in this case, call 999 if there is a risk to life or if water has entered the living areas of your home or business and you require evacuation. So just to get people at that first point to... Sorry, councillor Clark.
Previously, people rang 999, told the house is getting flooded and were told, is there a risk to your life? No, well, put the phone down and stop wasting time. So has that been cleared up now?
So on this message, we are just talking, we have asked if there is a risk to life or they require evacuation. So those two distinct circumstances, which is... So I'm going to look to Matt for that.
Thank you. Through the Lynx Resilience Forum and the discussions we have, the advice is that if people think there is an immediate risk to life and their home is internally flooded, they should still ring fire and rescue. And that did happen during the January floods, as witnessed by those who were evacuated from properties, particularly in Grantham and Boston and Billingsborough. So the guidance and the advice is at the moment that that should be the first port of call. If there is a risk to life, it's 999 to call the fire brigade or emergency services.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Microphone, councillor Clark. Microphone.
What I'm saying is, has it been cleared with the fire brigade? Because the fire brigades are the ones that rang up and they got told, put the phone down if there isn't a risk to life. Don't mind about water entering your home, that's fine. If there's risk to life, we'll come out here, but we're not coming out here because basically they said, where do you want us to pump the water to?
Yes, and that will be something that I'm sure will be revisited as part of the debrief following the event. But I think what this is trying to do is trying to steer people to make the right call and the right decision so they do get the help and support that they need, so that if those questions are asked, they give the appropriate answers, which will then steer the emergency services to how they best respond.
The other thing that message is doing for the highway service and for people across the county who may not be affected by the incident is to let them know that whilst the incident's ongoing and we're diverting our resources to helping those people who are in urgent need, some of the other services there might be an extended timescale for. Just showing you this page again on the staging site because this message, the message appears consistently throughout the reporting experience from there on in, it will appear on every page. The reason we're doing that is because some customers won't come to us via our own co-branded site with Fix My Street, some customers will come to us through the national site. The point they hit the national site, the national site doesn't know where they are in the country, so we can't display our message on the homepage there, but we can display it on the site consistently throughout. So now moving on to our live site as it is today. If I start to make a report, I'll run you through some of the improvements that Matt has just talked about. Apologies while I type. So the first thing you do on the site as a customer is to enter a location and then choose the likely one from the list. You then pinpoint. And that's telling us exactly where that customer wishes to report. If you're on a mobile device, you can do that via your GPS as well. So we have split out the categories previously. We had drains and flooding was a category on its own. We now have drains, a separate category for that. Within there, we have blocked drains, damaged dike, ditch or culvert. We then separated out flooding of the highway from flooding home or business, which I think is important to give people the reassurance that they can report flooding of a home or business on a site that's called Fix My Street. If I select flooding on the highway, you get the options to report flooding on a public right-of-way or on the carriageway or indeed within a subway. And clearly, all of those reports would go to the Highways teams. Moving into flooding affecting a home or business. Here again, if you click evacuation required, that's a 999 situation. If you need that help, that's, they're the right people to call. So we won't take the report on the site because we couldn't handle that type of report. If you click affecting outbuildings, garden and outside areas, that will go to a team within Highways. If you click that it's already affected the living areas of the property, that will go to the Floods and Water team for them to be able to investigate as part of their Section 19 investigation. And again, if you click likely to enter living areas of the property, this enables the customer to add additional information about if they require sandbags, are they able to get their own sandbags? And there are just dropdown menus so the customer can select those. We ask a question about being vulnerable and that is to enable us to triage the most vulnerable customers, to get those to the top of the pile for the most immediate action. We also ask questions about which areas of the property, we can provide sandbags for doors and air bricks, so we ask the questions around those. That enables our team to get the information they need to be able to deliver the correct amount of sandbags to the property. And then you can add photos if you would like. And then we carry on and take the report. That's where the customer would enter their personal details. I'm just going to show you a couple of the emails. These have come again out of the staging site, but they are replicated in the live site. This is showing the email that you would get back and it's just important to note that it's marked as private. So that means that these reports about property flooding aren't in the public domain. They're sent through to the correct team for action, but they're not displayed on the public site. And just also, just to demonstrate the level of information that we give back, this one was one where it would have been that water had entered the property. So we give the customer more information about where to go if the situation worsens, how to get information about the flood and how to get more information about the ongoing incident.
Okay, thank you for that. So just to reiterate, this is feedback and information we've taken on board following our experience of dealing with such reports in Babette and Henk. So hopefully this has streamlined it a little bit and made it a bit more intuitive for people. But again, we always learn from these things and there's always the opportunity to improve as required. One thing I was just going to add as well is we also have a message to make it clear that if something has initially gone to our Highways colleagues or the Highways teams and it's internal flooded property, there will be a message to that person to say that it has then been passed to the Floods and Water team to carry out a formal investigation so that the individuals know that it hasn't just been dismissed or closed down, they know that there is then a next stage where something will happen. So they are informed of that. And then through my team, obviously, contact will be made as part of the investigation process. So hopefully that's an improvement, but as I say, we will continue to monitor this as we experience these events. Just on communication, if I could just briefly update you as well, something that isn't in the report but has been ongoing since. We have also been jointly developing an information poster as to where and how people can report flooding and where they can get help. That's been developed with our emergency planning colleagues and that's going to be distributed out to community groups, mailed out to schools and others to make sure that information is available to support individuals. information is available to support individuals. We've also been working with emergency planning in developing either community action groups or emergency plans for communities and working with communities, that's an ongoing project at the moment. And also discussing with our comms teams how we can best support comms messages from LCC regarding how to report flooding and the help and support that's available, including regular updates or articles in county news, which I know is something that we've obviously previously discussed and mentioned in this committee. The final thing, moving on, and I'm happy to take any questions on any of this at the end of course, but the final thing to move on with in the report is that at the last scrutiny committee meeting, we brought the report, the peer review report, that had been undertaken into the review of the Environment Agency technical documents about the operation of the flood relief reservoir at Horn Castle. That report, as you recall, had recommendations back to the Environment Agency. The Environment Agency have now considered those recommendations and the appendix A of my report includes a summary of the answers that the Environment Agency have proposed to the recommendations that came out of the peer review report. I will leave it there, chairman, to take any questions on any of the points I've discussed, but I'm very mindful, of course, we may want to review the comments in the appendix in relation to Horn Castle and obviously Morgan is here to answer any questions and assist with that as well. I'll pause there, thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Clark, Hobson and then councillor Gray.
Thank you, chairman. I'm glad to see this, you know, state's lessons learned because we'll base it just on the tenant, the residents down St Catharines that were flooded. In their view, the whole episode was a bloody shambles. Nobody came back to them, nobody helped them, you know. It's not just the villages, it's middle of towns that was getting flooded as well. But the one point I want to bring up about Section 19, the report states that the non-return valve of the Anglia Water Board is working correctly. If it's working correctly, should it discharge water when the river's high that flows along the road? So it comes out of one gully, flows along the road and goes down to the other gully. The point is, if that other gully is blocked, then it will flood. But that wasn't seen to be mentioned in the report, I just wondered why.
I would have to re-familiarise myself with the report, although I am mindful of the issues that have been in that particular area, both with the high river levels, condition of the flat valves and no Anglia Water have been in attendance down there and the gullies. So I think there's sort of three factors to take into account there. And I know there have been some ongoing discussions with different organisations, so I would just have to re-familiarise myself with those particular recommendations and happy to come back to you councillor Clark, unless, sorry, my colleague from Anglia Water has anything to add.
Is it possible to have a joint meeting down there? So the water, you know, Anglia Water Board, the council are both there at the same time because the residents think they're getting a bit of, you know, one story off one person, one story off another. But I still can't understand why a non-return valve releases water when the rivers are.
The purpose of a non-return valve is to stop water obviously coming back, but once it's shut, it also can't discharge. So it's a double-edged sword where it stops water coming back, but once the pressure of the river forces the non-return valve to shut, nothing can then get out. So water will then find its easiest route, and if that's through road gullies or whatever else, to get to the surface and find its hydraulic level. We have checked all the non-return valves down at St Catharines, I think we only had three or four of them that actually belonged to Anglia Water. We have checked those and the ones belonging to Anglia Water are working and have been serviced, but in order to take any other questions from residents, I would absolutely be willing to meet the council on-site and yourself councillor Clark and answer any questions residents have got.
And if I could just briefly add likewise, although I think probably in this instance, it may be some of our highways colleagues that perhaps may be best placed to attend, but again, more than happy to help coordinate a meeting there if helpful, no problem.
Thank you for that councillor Hobson. Go on councillor Gray.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to speak. It's been interesting, I've sat here for nearly four hours, so, you know, lots of communities are experiencing some of what Horn Castle has and continues to experience. So as we all know, the county council commissioned the independent review of the EA reports into the flooding in Horn Castle through Storm Babette and Storm Heng and they were carried out by Geosmart. And as I commented, I think, at the last meeting in October, Horn Castle residents and the town council, and indeed did I, we questioned the scope of the report because we really believe that the EA's data and modelling really should have been challenged. But anyway, Geosmart made 10 recommendations in their review of the EA's report and I thought they were very reasonable recommendations. And as we've already heard, the EA's responses to the Geosmart recommendations are shown in appendix A of the report. Unfortunately, the responses are brief, they lack sufficient detail and to each recommendation, the overall response from the EA is no further work is proposed, which is not acceptable, is not acceptable to the residents of Horn Castle. At the October meeting, I did ask that the committee undertakes to ensure that all Geosmart recommendations are investigated independently and I still would hold that. And can I ask that the Geosmart be commissioned to comment on the EA's responses to their recommendations? Because as I say, the recommendations I thought were very valid, but to just have an overall response to every recommendation that no further work is proposed is rather disgusting. Geosmart during their investigation spoke to many residents impacted by flooding, but I don't think they ever spoke to any of the three landlords whose land forms the flood alleviation scheme. One of those landlords is Michael Reed, he's been very vocal on the subject, he often attends the Horn Castle town council meetings and talks in the public forum. He speaks very well, actually, and Mr Reed has written several reports following the flooding. I mean, he highlights in those reports the basic false assumptions which he believes were made by the EA in their report. And he feels the assumptions made by the EA are not made with accurate knowledge of the site workings of the Hemmingby Beck or the West Ashby Beck or the ground strut of the Bay and Valley, which clearly contributed to what happened. There's other residents in Horn Castle who've been very vocal and very articulate in looking into matters. We've got Richard Barker and Ian Norris, no doubt they're listening and watching today. And they've also continued to carry out detailed research and created several reports. Indeed, Mr Barker and Mr Norris have forwarded those reports to various members of the committee, I think, and to you, Mr Chairman, also. And I've actually forwarded those reports to our office, to Matt Harrison and to Chris Miller, because those gentlemen have asked me to do so. I do think that those reports by Mr Reed, Barker and Norris, they're credible reports. There's a lot of information in there that we should be taking note of. I've kept my colleague councillor Darren Hobson updated as to what's been happening. He does represent East Lindsay on this committee, he represents as well, and he's attending some meetings with these gentlemen. And he's seen their ongoing concerns and so I thank him for his support. It states in our report today at page 75, and there's a comment, it says, "If anyone can provide new compelling evidence that challenges the investigation, then this will be considered by them. However, it needs to be clear evidence and not just conjecture." Well, Mr Ian Norris has considered the comparison of Storm Babette and the recent rainfall event over the 5th and 6th of January of this year, and he believes that there is comparison. And it's helpful in identifying the errors that he believe and we believe have been made in the EA's response to Storm Babette. As I've said, I've forwarded these reports to Matt Harrison and Chris Miller, but I think I would be grateful if those reports from these gentlemen could be forwarded to the wider committee and indeed your working group, because I note your working group is going to feed back next month. So I think that to see their findings and some very detailed scientific investigations going on here, and I think I would like people to see those if that's possible. During Storm Babette, at times of peak heights, all devices installed to relieve the town council failed to a certain extent, the flood alleviation scheme failed to a certain extent, added the swimming pool sluice had in the Horn Castle tilt gate. And indeed, Mr Chairman, you and some other members of this committee have actually seen the Horn Castle tilt gate and seen how it didn't perform or should have performed. And as we know, there's been considerable flooding in Horn Castle. 129 properties, including 12 businesses, have suffered from internal flooding and in fact, many properties suffered external flooding. But then if we come on to the recent events in January, on the 5th and 6th of January, all devices worked correctly that's supposed to protect Horn Castle, so the flood alleviation scheme, the swimming pool sluice, the tilt gate, they all worked correctly. And guess what? No properties, to my knowledge, were flooded whatsoever. Now, the total volumes of the two events will be, will be no doubt said here today are not exactly comparable, but if you look at the critical hours of the flood period and you look at the reports that these gentlemen have produced, I think you'll see they are very comparable. I think it's still really worrying that I still understand there are issues with the flood alleviation scheme. I think Mr Ray said that various things, improvements had been made to that scheme and they may well have been made to that scheme. But I understand recently there was a power cut and the flood, the scheme couldn't be rebooted after that power cut and again, things had to be dealt with manually there. I'm told the obvious option would be to change the systems to fail-safe mode, but apparently that's not happened and perhaps I wonder why. And there are other assets like the Horn Castle tilt gate and the swimming pool sluice, I've already mentioned, that still do need attention, those really do need attention. So I hope, Mr Chairman, when you have, when we come back in a month's time and we look at what your working group has had to say, that some of these things will be looked at in detail, please, and I'm really interested to hear what the findings of that working group are. Well, just to conclude about the Section 19 report for Horn Castle, it's a huge report. It's just been actually reduced to the community, it's 233 pages. And of course, there's lots of detailed recommendations because as I've said, a lot of properties were flooded during Storm Babette and Storm Heng. Many of the recommendations for different locations of the town, the relevant risk management authority is named as the EA, as you would imagine, and they state the flood structures in Horn Castle should be reviewed by the EA. The progress of outstanding works to automate the swimming pool baths sluice and associated timescales should be confirmed by the EA. The progress for operating the flood structures in Horn Castle catchment should be reviewed by the EA. So please, committee, can I implore you that you do hold the EA to account because clearly we've got this Section 19 report here, 233 pages, all these people flooded. And again, it comes back to the EA need to look at what's happening in Horn Castle and let's hope that they do look and you can hold them to account in a short time scale. And please ensure that they take note of these recommendations. I know Mr Ray's here today, so he's hearing what I'm saying. That's all I'm going to say, Mr Chairman, there's other things I perhaps would have said, but we've been here for a long time today. But I really do thank you for the opportunity on behalf of the residents of Horn Castle and the town council for being able to just highlight some of these things, which I know you're aware of because you've kindly let me speak in the past and we've now got recommendations there in this report and you are, your working group is looking at things further. So thanks for the opportunity to raise these things, it is much appreciated. On behalf of those hundreds of people who've been flooded out of their homes and as I say, well over 100 properties internally flooded and some of those residents are still not back in their homes, so let's give a thought out to them. So thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Gray. Matthew, would you like to pick up on those points and anybody else that needs to?
Thank you there councillor Gray and I will only briefly respond if I may because I think, you know, Morgan here will have probably some more detailed comments to make. Just picking up on one or two of your points there, you mentioned various reports that have been circulated to myself and Chris Miller, they're held on file again with the floods and water team against all the information we have with Horn Castle. I believe not all of those reports may not have been forwarded to colleagues at the Environment Agency, which I feel is important and critical so that all information can be taken into account. So I was just encouraged that that does happen so that the Environment Agency do have sight of all of the documentation that we have had sight of because they will be best placed to review that information. So probably if we could just cross-reference that. I may pause there if I may because I think perhaps Morgan would be able to offer a more detailed response to some of those questions. Thank you.
Morgan? No, thank you Matthew, thank you councillor Gray. As you say, we've responded to the independent review. We feel that we've responded quite comprehensively and you've got the appendix there to go through some of those answers there. Some of those are quite technical, so I don't suppose we go through those at the moment. However, one thing we are keen to point out, as it says in Matthew's report, if there is any new or sort of compelling evidence that does come along, we're more than happy to talk to people about that. I understand that we've given, that we've agreed to meet with Mr Barker and Norris, I believe, to discuss their recent sort of submissions, so more than happy to do that and obviously we'll, if Matthew forwards through that information, more than happy to look at that. As I say, work has been done, I'm not aware of the power cut issue, but I can follow up on that afterwards. But as I say, work was done last year to help make the site more resilient. Going forward, I do think we do need to come together as a partnership, we talked about partnership working previously. We can move forward to manage flood risk in Horn Castle and other places a lot more effectively if we can work as that partnership. Happy to do that. As I said, you know, looking at the rest of the community will be important going forward from here and understanding what can be achieved through that working.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Ray. So I'll ensure that those reports from these individuals do come to you, especially the latest report where they've done the comparison with them, the recent flooding that's occurred around the county early on in January. And I agree, we do need to move forward in partnership so we can have this meeting and we can see what the situation is and then see what is available, what suggestions, what funding can we got to help those residents of Horn Castle, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you councillor Hobson.
Thank you very much. Yeah, some of the things I was going to ask about have already been covered, so I won't repeat those. Other than to say, regarding the Section 19 report, could you update us on any conversations that you've had with the Environment Agency following the Section 19 reports in Horn Castle specifically regarding how you're ensuring that the EA are fully aware of where they need to have some further involvement into those issues? That's my first question.
Yes, certainly. So perhaps unsurprisingly, most of the focus has been around the peer review report, the operation of the reservoir and the recommendations and everything that has come out of that. So that has been the main focus. We will be picking up on other broader recommendations, not only with the Environment Agency, but all partners as well. And we do have a, by routine, a quarterly update meeting with, sorry, quarterly update with all partners as to where they are with the particular recommendations of the Section 19s. That's a standard meeting, a standard update that we have set in the calendar. However, of course, if there's anything to discuss, we don't have to wait for those meetings, we can discuss things if anything arises beforehand. So we will be working closely with the Environment Agency there. The Thunka Drain and River Waring is also a focus for us in Horn Castle because the report has highlighted that the fact that there were some contributing factors from those areas, some of linked to overland flows and overtopping. And through my team, we are also engaging with the East Mercia Rivers Trust and I know there's been some catchment work done in the upper catchment to do with natural flood risk management. So everything is on the table at the moment, we're exploring all of these different things. And those discussions are ongoing and there's a further meeting arranged with them in the middle of February. So just to try and give some assurance that yes, there is active dialogue going on with organisations.
Thank you for that. And just going back to the point that councillor Gray made, following the EA's comments to the Geosmart recommendations, we will be going back to Geosmart to ask them to comment on the Environment Agency's responses. I think I agree with what councillor Gray was saying, that many of the, what appeared to be a standard comment, that no further work is planned, I think frankly, for the people of Horn Castle, that that is less than satisfactory to them to know that, probably as far as, no disrespect, that the EA is concerned, you know, they're putting a line under it and moving on. I do feel that that needs further discussion.
As part of this process, that wasn't the original intention. If there is a desire to do so and from the committee, then obviously we will make those necessary arrangements. It's perhaps just worth reflecting back just as to, you know, the point that we've got, how we've how we've got to here. So the Environment Agency has responsibility for the asset and main river, and they, their engineers produce the very, the technical reports to answer the concerns that were raised regarding the operation of the flood relief reservoir following Storm Babette, and that was presented at an MPs meeting back in March last year. At the time, that was, the Environment Agency made their position clear, and that was a given. However, from that MPs meeting, it was requested that it was looked at independently in the approach taken, as we know, and obviously we've gone through this process to get to where we are now. So it wasn't the intention of Lincolnshire County Council to continually sort of review that, because the technical experts in this field have made their position clear, and the technical expertise doesn't lie within Lincolnshire County Council to necessarily directly challenge that, because the Environment Agency are the technical experts. So it wasn't the initial plan, however, that option is all course there to us, and if that is the willingness of committee that that's how we go, we can of course make those arrangements.
Chair, could I ask that that does happen, please, if there's someone paired to agree that?
Thank you. I think we can make sure that that does indeed take place. I don't see anybody else indicating to speak on this item, so genuinely thank you all for your contributions on this, particularly our external speakers, I appreciate they've had to go. But in that case, could I ask that the current list of completed and active flood investigations, which are online, are noted? Could I also ask that the work of the flood and water team is noted, and that the response of the Environment Agency to the independent technical peer assessment of the Environment Agency's previous review of the storm, the impact of Storm Babette on Horn Castle's reservoir asset performance review in February 2024 be noted? Assuming you've all kept up with that. Thank you very much for that. That takes us back to item eight, which is the Anglia Water update from Matt Moore, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep this really brief. So first of all, since we last met, we have had our final determination from Ofwat, and we will come at the next scrutiny meeting, if it's okay, and include a report to give the exact plans for what that means for Lincolnshire in terms of investment and where our focus is going to be. But the high-level headline for Lincolnshire is 11.2 million pounds to be spent, and the driver for that money is reducing CSO spills and reducing flood risk that relates from, flood risk from sewer assets. And that's an important point, and just listening in over the last kind of four to five hours, and it's an important point to make, that just because something floods, it doesn't always have the same causes, or always from the same issue. You have, and different floodings require different levels of interventions to sort them out. I would make a point that one of the challenges we saw recently during the beginning of January was the level, the level that watercourses are getting to, and making it incredibly difficult for our assets to function in most periods where the EA has no choice, and the IDBs have no choice but to run the rivers and watercourses at the maximum level they can to prevent overtopping and that catastrophic flooding that we see, has a side effect of not allowing our treatment works to discharge, our treated effluents to discharge, as we've seen at Sandhill Beck, Washenborough Sewage Works, and as we saw in Stickney, where our sewage works in Stickney was flooded from an IDB watercourse as well, right through to the point that councillor Clark made at St Catherine's, where the level of the watercourse physically doesn't allow the surface water system to have free discharge, and therefore doesn't operate properly. So I hate to use the word challenge again, but these are challenges, and challenges require different levels of interventions. So that's a lot of money to be spent in Lincolnshire, it will be invested in Lincolnshire, and it will make life better for people of Lincolnshire, both from a water quality point of view, for reducing those CSO spills and reducing flood risk, but 11.2 million pounds is not going to solve the problem that we see in Lincolnshire, and that's a really important point to understand. But for the next meeting, I'll prepare a report that has exactly how we're going to spend that money, in what areas, so at least the councils are informed about what's going to happen in their local areas, and that should fill the public with a bit more confidence that we do have, that we do act on information that we get given, and we do have a plan. I wanted to touch base on Tallington, I've already done it, it is a big success story, that wouldn't be possible if we adopted a business-as-usual process, and I would like to, again, acknowledge the contribution of the parish council at Tallington in the work they've done to keep the momentum going on, Matt. Stickney is a similar issue, we've got a multi-agency group in Stickney, a little less momentum at Stickney, but councillor Wendy Boket, who chairs that multi-agency group, continues to dedicate a lot of her time to those residents in Stickney. Again, you know, the work she does in the community is second to none. So whilst we can't always help her in solving the problems that residents face due to other factors, like I've said, high watercourses, treatment works can't discharge, therefore the sewer system becomes ineffective, there's not a lot we can do about that in the time when the watercourse is high, but the contribution from her as a councillor to her community is absolutely astonishing. I think I'll leave it there and take any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. I'd hope that I'm still here for the next meeting to hear that, what sounds to be a really credible achievement, appreciating it's not going to solve everything, but it's a solid start. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you genuinely for that report and that update, and not just that, but your other contributions throughout the debates of today, and I'm quite happy if everybody's content to take that as noted. That leads us on to our final item this morning, which is the work programme on pages 81 to 83 of the agenda pack. Appreciate we haven't really got much by way of a work programme, because this is, apart from the additional meeting that we have on the 18th of February to wrap up the Storm Impact Working Group report, this is the last full agenda meeting of this committee prior to the May election. We normally have an election, a meeting which would take place beforehand, but obviously we get, we move into that pre-election period, we can't have one. Simon.
Thank you, thank you Chairman. Nothing to add, because you've essentially summed it up. For the meetings from the 27th of June onwards, I've just listed out the standard items that appear on each agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I suppose what I would say as advice on when it comes to timetabling and setting out meetings for the coming civic year, appreciating that the composition of the committee may very well change. Given that we are only scheduled for four of these meetings every year, I wouldn't want us necessarily to move to more shorter meetings, because I appreciate the strength of what we're achieving here is often done through having the key people in the room to ask the question to, and if we somehow went to splitting up the agenda and having reports, say, from Environment Agency and Anglia Water on one occasion, and Drainage Board and Matthew on another, then we'd only end up with half of the people. But it probably is, it would be worth just mentioning that for the future, these probably are better as four-hour meetings, and rather than getting people's hopes up that they're going to be home before lunch. And I make genuinely no apology for the fact that we take our time with this, it is far more important, given what Lincolnshire has been through in the last, in the last few weeks, let alone the last couple of years, that we do this work diligently and carefully, and make sure that all of the questions that our communities expect to be asked are asked, and the answers are well heard. Genuinely, colleagues, thank you for your contributions this morning, it brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you to all of the officers and representatives of external organisations that have, partners that have been here and presented. Enjoy the rest of your day, and I look forward to joining some of you in Somerset later in the week, and hopefully all of you on the 18th of February for our final meeting to conclude the work of the term. So thank you genuinely, all of you, and enjoy the rest of your days.